Person learned. Ber and other state officials, certainly we were already along that path of bringing kids back for in-person learning. And we believe it's the right time because, one, we're ready. We've got the protocols and procedures in place. Our staff, our school-based staff, our principals, working with our learning community, superintendents have done a tremendous job preparing and getting us to this point. And we know that in-person learning is an opportunity to bring back students in person. And we're fully ready and committed to executing on our plans.
Of course, you've looked at the metrics and the numbers, and you've spoken to the county. What would close CMS once again? You do have the power to close schools if you see fit. What would be some of the things you would look at, and what would have to happen for us to go back to full remote?
So certainly, it's not one particular factor that would cause schools to close. It is a variety of factors. I think an important factor in that decision, obviously, we want to look at the metrics, both our community metrics as well as our district-wide metrics. But we also, you know, want to continuously monitor our staffing levels to make sure that they are where they need to be in order for us to provide a safe environment for our students. So there are a variety of factors.
Now, the board has given you the option to close individual schools. How would that work? What does that look like?
Yes, the board voted to recently provide me with the flexibility to close schools on an individual basis. And the board also recently gave me the authority to close parts of a school or a grade level in particular. And it's important to have that flexibility because you want to have as many tools in your toolbox as you possibly can, particularly during a pandemic.
You say that we're ready to go back into the classroom. Of course, some parents, some teachers are a little bit concerned. How do you make them feel at ease? That first day when everybody goes back, how will you make them feel at ease? And how can you help them understand that you've done everything possible to make sure that we are as safe as we can be in the building?
That's a great question. And I think back to when we initially had our elementary school students and staff members in our buildings. We had a subset of our students with disabilities, pre-K students, we had them back in the building. And I remember the anxiety and some of the apprehension that families and staff members had at that time. What we found was that once they returned to the building and they saw all of the protocols and safety measures that we had put in place, that anxiety and fear began to disappear. And so we believe once we bring more people back into our buildings, including those in our traditional middle schools and high schools who have not been in person this year, we believe the same thing will happen primarily because of the protocols and the safety measures that were taken.
We have about 60,000 students out of our 140,000-plus who have decided they will not return to the building. They've chosen to stay full remote. How do you plan to keep them engaged in learning?
So that is a significant portion of our student population. That's a choice that families have made, and we completely respect that, and we honor that. And we are doing all that we can at the school level, principals and teachers, to keep our students in the full-remoting academy engaged in learning. And we will continue to do that and make sure that we're providing the best possible instruction that we possibly can, as we will for our students who are returning for in-person learning.
And of course, teachers are prepared for the in-person and those who have decided to stay at home. Let's talk about vaccinations.
Yes.
Do you think that our teachers should be at the forefront of getting those shots?
Absolutely. But I do want to clarify that we, teachers are extremely important to our school district, and we want them to, I encourage them to get their vaccines at the appropriate time.
So when will that opportunity come for teachers and other staff to get that vaccine?
As far as our student-facing staff members, our governor announced recently that on February the 24th, that our student-facing staff members will begin to have that opportunity to receive a vaccination. And so we're excited about that. We're excited about that as we bring students back and staff members back in person.
Will you roll up your sleeves?
Absolutely, when it's my time, because I don't want to leapfrog over any other staff member. But certainly, when it's my time to get the vaccine, I look forward to actually doing that.
Do you foresee a time when it will become mandatory for teachers and staff to get that shot?
You know, that's a great question, and I think that's a very personal question. And so that is not something that we have, as a school district, that we have mandated. And I frankly don't anticipate that we will go in that direction. But I do want to encourage staff members to get the vaccine. I think that's an extremely important task.
Well, of course, we have students returning back to campus, and some of those students are very excited because they get to participate in the performing arts as well as athletics. What's the plan to keep them safe and keep them on the field and on the stage?
Yes, we're excited to resume athletics and begin arts for our students who participate in those extracurricular activities. You know, it's important to remember that athletics, the arts are a part of students' overall educational experience. And so we think it's important from that standpoint. Having said that, we have very strict protocols in place that we have spoken with athletic directors and coaches and advisors to ensure that we're following those proper protocols, because this is a privilege. And we want to not just begin these activities, but we want students to be able to continue to enjoy them throughout the rest of the school year.
A rite of passage for our students is the prom and also graduation. Last year, students missed both. Do you foresee us having a prom, dressed up, capping gown, marching across the stage this time?
We do acknowledge that prom and graduation are important rites of passages for our students, and we have begun to look at that. We have a team that is exploring the possibility and to determine what can we offer. So that decision has not been made yet.
Any ideas yet?
We have some ideas surfacing. Certainly, we had successful drive-by ceremonies for graduations last year and at the mid-year point this year in January. And so those ideas are still on the table, but we have not made a decision just yet. More to come on that later.
More insight from the superintendent in a moment. We all know that change is inevitable during a pandemic, and CMS is adapting in many ways. So we asked CMS Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Matthew Hayes, what's different in academics? Give us insight on lessons learned.
We will not come back into education the way we left it, meaning that the pandemic has exposed, as I said before, many things that we thought existed, but it just really opened them wide open, right? Some of the disparities, some of the inequities that we have across our community that we need to address and how we need to address them. How are we going to support those schools? How will they always receive the best of what we have to offer in our district to get them where they need to be to serve our students the proper way?
Insight on lower-than-expected student enrollment.
So we saw the largest gap of students, actually, in our kindergarten group of students that just basically did not attend, did not come in. We also saw what we would normally see as an influx of students into our early grades. Kindergarten through third grade was not the same influx that we would see in years past. We really believe that that's really where a large majority of the loss in our numbers are generated. Many families that maybe have had kindergarten students probably said, "I'm going to hold off a year. Instead of sending my child in their first year during a pandemic, I'm going to wait, and they'll go to school next year." And so we're looking to really, with excitement, to have them join us as we get ready to launch into next school year.
An insight on changes in how students will be graded.
We've also made some changes to our grading expectations that we have. A student cannot earn lower than a 50. A 50 is not passing. Basically, what it says is that a student still has an opportunity to be within 10 points to be able to pass the course. We don't know exactly what is happening in all of our households that may prevent a student from getting that work done. So what it does, it allows for students to have an opportunity of hope, that no matter what their situation is, there's still an opportunity that they can dig in and get the work done and be able to pass that course.
Welcome back to Insight. Nearly all of her time as chairperson of the CMS Board of Education has been during the COVID-19 pandemic. That has emptied schools, ushered in virtual learning, and divided a community on when to bring students back. It's been a lesson in leadership for Elise Dashu. Ms. Dashu, thank you so much for joining us today, giving us some insight as we return to in-person classrooms and in-person school. Is now the right time to go back into the school buildings?
It is. It is the right time. I know we've been waiting a long time. I know there are a lot of parents who wish we'd gotten back sooner. But when you look at our readiness in the school, when you look at our staffing readiness and our PPE and the work we've done on our school buildings and the community rates, this is the right time. But of course, it's on us to take every possible precaution to keep our students safe and to keep our grown-ups safe.
How difficult was that decision for you guys to make, for us to go back into the classroom?
Oh, it's so hard. It's been so hard.
A lot of conversations?
Yeah. Just, you know, the, following the evidence from the epidemiologists and the research continues to shift and change and evolve. And so, you know, you've definitely had to be flexible and up to speed on all of that. And just listening to thousands of parents and teachers and employees, like bus drivers and teacher assistants and kids, and everybody has a firmly-held, passionate opinion. So you've got to listen to all of that with empathy, and then ultimately find the best solution that you can come up with.
I wanted to ask you about that. I call it a lot of voices in your head. How do you make sure that you're giving everyone the information that they need to believe whatever it is that you're trying to convince them of?
Well, I don't know that I can convince anybody of anything. People are so divided right now in our nation. Everybody thinks their opinion about COVID is science-based, and the other person's opinion is political. And I hear that from both sides. And so ultimately, I just have to be empathetic when I listen to whether it's a family that is worried about our readiness to go back, or whether it's a family that is worried about the risks of their kids doing in-person learning too long. I have to listen and learn from both perspectives. And then ultimately, I have to follow the evidence and deal with the cards we've been dealt and make the best possible decision for our kids when there is no good decision. A lot of times, there's only the least bad decision.
What does that conversation sound like? A parent calls you, or a parent emails you, "I want my child back in the classroom," or you get the opposite, "I don't want my child back in the classroom." What does that conversation sound like if we could eavesdrop?
I don't think you'd want to eavesdrop on some of those conversations, because just the emotions have been incredibly intense for a year now.
Tell me this, and we spoke about this a second ago, there was no pandemic 101 class that we attended to prepare us for this. And if it was, it was the 8:00 AM class.
I wish, I know. I wish I'd taken that class in college.
Yeah, you were thrown into this. What have you learned?
Well, I learned that we have some incredible staff in CMS, everyone from the superintendent to every single school teacher. And the work that they're doing is heroic. It was heroic before there was ever a pandemic, and it's heroic on steroids right now. Yes, we've had to change course so many times because the pandemic has unfolded in kind of a chaotic way, but definitely have learned a lot about how to pull a team together in a crisis.
What would be your message to Team CMS, the students, teachers, and other staff, and the parents, as every single school opens its doors? Embrace all of those students coming back on campus.
Socially-distanced embrace.
Virtual hugs.
To be responsible. And that's for the community, too. We have got to be smart. I mean, I'm hearing, I'm starting to hear anecdotes of families planning big spring break trips. Oh, let's just be responsible, because we're still in this pandemic. Kindness is so, so important. So be kind and be respectful.
Well, we certainly do appreciate your time, and we appreciate your insight as CMS students prepare to head back into the classroom with all campuses ready to welcome, I should say, Team CMS back.
Yeah, it's going to be good. I'm so, I'm glad that we're here. And, but yeah, we just all have to work together to make sure we stay safe.
Well, as we get ready to go back to school and we get ready to end this show, when I say back to school, back to the building, any final thoughts, any last thoughts you want to offer our team and our family members of CMS?
Yes, I would strongly encourage us all, because this is really a community effort. And although the numbers, the metrics are moving in the right direction, by no means are we out of the woods. And so I implore us to continue to do those things to keep us safe. I really ask our parents to make sure that we do not send students who are sick to school. We are, we have reopened our schools for in-person learning, but we want to keep them open. And so that will be key in us being able to keep our schools open.
We'll be flexible, and we'll be ready.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Students in CMS now have the option of returning to in-person learning at their school or continuing with virtual learning at their home. The steps that got us here put a top priority on the safety of all of our students and all of our staff. Thanks so much for joining us. We hope you learned something that will help you become an informed parent, an energized employee, or an engaged community member. Your support is important to the success of CMS. Be safe and take care. We'll see you next time for more insight.
We do this for sanitation purposes, to kill anything that's going on on the bus with germs and, of course, COVID.
So here are the iPad that everybody will get along with a charger.
It's different, but it is. I'm loving seeing the kids smile every day and being back at school. So I'm ready. We ready.
Meet Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, and Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, and Jordan, and Jamie Johnson, two beautiful babies born on the very same day. Each baby has a good chance of landing in a good place in life, as long as one of them doesn't lose the zip code lottery. Like 1 million babies each year, Jamie's been born into a low-income family. And since Jamie's mom lacked access to good prenatal care, Jamie's much smaller than Jordan. And since they won't have access to brain-developing activities found in high-quality childcare, low-income children like Jamie will be two times more likely to experience developmental delays. It probably won't surprise you that by their third birthday, Jamie's been exposed to a lot fewer words than Jordan, a whole lot fewer. And I imagine Jamie's fourth birthday won't be much better. By the time they reach kindergarten, Jamie will have already fallen behind Jordan in language and pre-reading skills by 12 to 14 months. And getting to school on a regular basis will be perhaps Jamie's biggest challenge. Unfortunately, a myriad of health, transportation, and housing problems will cause between 5 and 7.5 million Jamies to be chronically absent this year. But with summer right around the corner, you'd think Jamie would have plenty of time to catch up with Jordan then. Sadly, summer presents new challenges for Jamie, a mountain of challenges. You see, every summer, Jordan's learning will evolve by a month because of access to libraries, field trips, and camps, while Jamie will lose two months of school learning every summer because good habits such as reading haven't been reinforced. By the time they reach third grade, Jamie will be between two and two and a half school years behind Jordan in critical reading skills. And how much more likely is Jamie to drop out than Jordan because he can't read at a third-grade level? 13 times more likely, and the results of which are frankly catastrophic. Wait just one minute there, folks. The story doesn't end right there. Fortunately for Jamie, and Jordan, and all of us, there's a whole lot of folks out there that believe neither luck nor lottery nor zip codes should dictate Jamie's future, who also believe that our schools can't do it alone. Luckily, there are leaders, organizations, and good people out there that are dedicated to believing in a whole lot more. The solution right now is relatively straightforward, if we can commit to four things. Number one, we need to make sure our kids are healthy and ready for school. Number two, we need to ensure they grow up in a word-and-book-enriched environment. Number three, we need to engage them in healthy and educational activities over the summer. Number four, we need to make sure that Jamie attends school every single day, because at the end of the day, you and I both know that lotteries, zip codes, and plain old dumb luck don't really offer our children's future. We do.
There are oceans and rocks, places where fish swim and birds fly, where mountains spring up, and trees and grass grow all around. History is made, art is created, things happen that should always be remembered. Heroes emerge. A woman sets people free. A man makes light. A leader steps forward. People get together. They help each other out. They make their own places to run and play and contemplate the universe. There's pride and gratitude and fun. It belongs to everyone. It can be a place, a feeling, a state of mind. So get up, get out there, and find your park.
I feel powerful and confident and like I could do anything.
We got to see stuff that we never saw before, and we got to try something that we've never done before.
One, zero, all-engine runner. Lift off.
I think if I wasn't in a girl's cab, none of this would have happened.
Hey, did you hear about Jen?
No, what happened?
She posted something. See?
What was she thinking?
Sharing online is serious business. Visit DHS.gov/StopThinkConnect for tips on how to be safe online.
CMS Television, your source for news and information in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools.
On this episode of Insight, we are ready. CMS opens all school buildings for the return of students.
Because we have to make sure not only the cleanliness, but also the safety and the health of our staff and students returning.
Student-facing employees and their shot at the vaccine.
I encourage them to get their vaccines at the appropriate time.
Board Chairperson Elise Dashu and the lessons learned from leadership.
Everybody has a firmly-held, passionate opinion. You've got to listen to all of that with empathy.
For this and more, we'll ask the superintendent for insight. Hello, I'm Coretta Wilson, and welcome to Insight with CMS Superintendent Ernest Winston, the show that keeps you up to date on the issues and initiatives in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. It was almost a year ago when the CMS superintendent and the CMS board chairperson announced that in-person learning at our schools would be suspended due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, with all schools ready to open, we welcome all students back to the classroom. CMS bus drivers and the fleet of over 1,000 buses are ready. CMS custodial staff, taking care of more than 170 school buildings, are ready. And CMS operational staff, teachers, and principals, properly prepared with procedures and PPE, are ready. In our community, there's been no shortage of opinions on the return to school, and that's why we spoke with CMS Superintendent Ernest Winston for insight. Well, good afternoon, Superintendent Winston. It's good to see you once again.
Good afternoon, Coretta. It's good to see you.
Well, we have a lot to talk about in this issue or this episode of Insight. It's been almost a year since CMS closed its doors due to the pandemic, and it appears that we are finally about ready to open our doors back up to our students and to our staff. Why is this? Why is this the right time to go back into the building?
We believe that this is the right time. Of course, at the national level, our president has urged us to return kids to in-person learning, and so too has our governor, Governor Cooper, and other state officials. Certainly, we were already along that path of bringing kids back for in-person learning. And we believe it's the right time because, one, we're ready. We've got the protocols and procedures in place. Our staff, our school-based staff, our principals, working with our learning community superintendents have done a tremendous job preparing and getting us to this point. And we know that in-person learning is the optimal environment for most of our students because we do have students who thrive in remote learning as well. So I want to acknowledge that. But this is an opportunity to bring back students in person. And we're fully ready and committed to executing on our plans.
Of course, you've looked at the metrics and the numbers, and you've spoken to the county. What would close CMS once again? You do have the power to close schools if you see fit. What would be some of the things you would look at, and what would have to happen for us to go back to full remote?
So certainly, it's not one particular factor that would cause schools to close. It is a variety of factors. I think an important factor in that decision, obviously, we want to look at the metrics, both our community metrics as well as our district-wide metrics. But we also, you know, want to continuously monitor our staffing levels to make sure that they are where they need to be in order for us to provide a safe environment for our students. So there are a variety of factors.
Now, the board has given you the option to close individual schools. How would that work? What does that look like?
Yes, the board voted to recently provide me with the flexibility to close schools on an individual basis. And the board also recently gave me the authority to close parts of a school or a grade level in particular. And it's important to have that flexibility because you want to have as many tools in your toolbox as you possibly can, particularly during a pandemic.
You say that we're ready to go back into the classroom. Of course, some parents, some teachers are a little bit concerned. How do you make them feel at ease? That first day when everybody goes back, how will you make them feel at ease? And how can you help them understand that you've done everything possible to make sure that we are as safe as we can be in the building?
That's a great question. And I think back to when we initially had our elementary school students and staff members in our buildings. We had a subset of our students with disabilities, pre-K students, we had them back in the building. And I remember the anxiety and some of the apprehension that families and staff members had at that time. What we found was that once they returned to the building and they saw all of the protocols and safety measures that we had put in place, that anxiety and fear began to disappear. And so we believe, once we bring more people back into our buildings, including those in our traditional middle schools and high schools who have not been in-person this year, we believe the same thing will happen, primarily because of the protocols and the safety measures that we're taking.
We have about 60,000 students out of our 140,000-plus who have decided they will not return to the building. They've chosen to stay full remote. How do you plan to keep them engaged in learning?
So that is a significant portion of our student population. That's a choice that families have made, and we completely respect that and we honor that. And we are doing all that we can at the school level, principals and teachers, to keep our students in the full-remote academy engaged in learning. And we will continue to do that and make sure that we're providing the best possible instruction that we possibly can, as we will for our students who are returning for in-person learning.
And of course, teachers are prepared for the in-person and those who have decided to stay at home. Let's talk about vaccinations.
Yes.
Do you think that our teachers should be at the forefront of getting those shots?
Absolutely. But I do want to clarify that we, teachers are extremely important to our school district, and we want them to, I encourage them to get their vaccines at the appropriate time.
So when will that opportunity come for teachers and other staff to get that vaccine?
As far as our student-facing staff members, our governor announced recently that on February the 24th, that our student-facing staff members will begin to have that opportunity to receive a vaccination. And so we're excited about that. We're excited about that as we bring students back and staff members back in person.
Will you roll up your sleeves?
Absolutely, when it's my time. Because I don't want to leapfrog over any other staff member. But certainly, when it's my time to get the vaccine, I look forward to actually doing that.
Do you foresee a time when it will become mandatory for teachers and staff to get that shot?
You know, that's a great question, and I think that's a very personal question. And so that is not something that we have, as a school district, that we have mandated. And I frankly don't anticipate that we will go in that direction. But I do want to encourage staff members to get the vaccine. I think that's an extremely important task.
Well, of course, we have students returning back to campus, and some of those students are very excited because they get to participate in the performing arts as well as athletics. What's the plan to keep them safe and keep them on the field and on the stage?
Yes, we're excited to resume athletics and begin arts for our students who participate in those extracurricular activities. You know, it's important to remember that athletics, the arts, are a part of students' overall educational experience. And so we think it's important from that standpoint. Having said that, we have very strict protocols in place that we have spoken with athletic directors and coaches and advisors to ensure that we're following those proper protocols because this is a privilege. And we want to not just begin these activities, but we want students to be able to continue to enjoy them throughout the rest of the school year.
A rite of passage for our students is the prom and also graduation. Last year, students missed both. Do you foresee us having a prom, dressed up, capping gown, marching across the stage this time?
We do acknowledge that prom and graduation are important rites of passages for our students. And we have begun to look at that. We have a team that is exploring the possibility and to determine what can we offer. So that decision has not been made yet.
Any ideas yet?
We have some ideas surfacing. Certainly, we had successful drive-by ceremonies for graduations last year and at the mid-year point this year in January. And so those ideas are still on the table. But we have not made a decision just yet. More to come on that later.
More insight from the superintendent in a moment. We all know that change is inevitable during a pandemic, and CMS is adapting in many ways. So we asked CMS Deputy Superintendent Dr. Matthew Hayes, what's different in academics? Give us insight on lessons learned.
We will not come back into education the way we left it, meaning that the pandemic has exposed, as I said before, many things that we thought existed, but it just really opened them wide open, right? Some of the disparities, some of the inequities that we have across our community that we need to address and how we need to address them. How are we going to support those schools? How will they always receive the best of what we have to offer in our district to get them where they need to be to serve our students the proper way?
Insight on lower-than-expected student enrollment.
So we saw the largest gap of students, actually, in our kindergarten group of students that just basically did not attend, did not come in. We also saw what we would normally see as an influx of students into our early grades. Kindergarten through 3rd grade was not the same influx that we would see in years past. We really believe that that's really where a large majority of the loss in our numbers are generated. Many families that maybe have had kindergarten students probably said, "I'm going to hold off for a year. Instead of sending my child in their first year during a pandemic, I'm going to wait and they'll go to school next year." And so we're looking to really, with excitement, to have them join us as we get ready to launch into next school year.
An insight on changes in how students will be graded.
We've also made some changes to our grading expectations that we have. A student cannot earn lower than a 50. A 50 is not passing. Basically, what it says is that a student still has an opportunity to be within 10 points to be able to pass the course. We don't know exactly what is happening in all of our households that may prevent a student from getting that work done. So what it does, it allows for students to have an opportunity of hope, that no matter what their situation is, there's still an opportunity that they can dig in and get the work done and be able to pass that course.
Welcome back to Insight. Nearly all of her time as chairperson of the CMS Board of Education has been during the COVID-19 pandemic that has emptied schools, ushered in virtual learning, and divided a community on when to bring students back. It's been a lesson in leadership for Elise Dashu. Ms. Dashu, thank you so much for joining us today, giving us some insight as we return to in-person classrooms and in-person school. Is now the right time to go back into the school buildings?
It is. It is the right time. I know we've been waiting a long time. I know there are a lot of parents who wish we'd gotten back sooner. But when you look at our readiness in the school, when you look at our staffing readiness and our PPE and the work we've done on our school buildings and the community rates, this is the right time. But of course, it's on us to take every possible precaution to keep our students safe and to keep our grown-ups safe.
How difficult was that decision for you guys to make, for us to go back into the classroom?
Oh, it's so hard. It's been so hard.
A lot of conversations?
Yeah. Just, you know, the, following the evidence from the epidemiologists, and the research continues to shift and change and evolve. And so, you know, you've definitely had to be flexible and up to speed on all of that. And just listening to thousands of parents and teachers and employees, like bus drivers and teacher assistants and kids. And everybody has a firmly-held, passionate opinion. You've got to listen to all of that with empathy and then ultimately find the best solution that you can come up with.
I wanted to ask you about that. I call it a lot of voices in your head. How do you make sure that you're giving everyone the information that they need to believe whatever it is that you're trying to convince them of?
Well, I don't know that I can convince anybody of anything. People are so divided right now in our nation. Everybody thinks their opinion about COVID is science-based, and the other person's opinion is political. And I hear that from both sides. And so ultimately, I just have to be empathetic when I listen to whether it's a family that is worried about our readiness to go back or whether it's a family that is worried about the risks of their kids doing in-person learning too long. I have to listen and learn from both perspectives. And then ultimately, I have to follow the evidence and deal with the cards we've been dealt and make the best possible decision for our kids when there is no good decision a lot of times. There's only the least bad decision.
What does that conversation sound like? A parent calls you or a parent emails you, "I want my child back in the classroom," or you get the opposite, "I don't want my child back in the classroom." What does that conversation sound like if we could eavesdrop?
I don't think you'd want to eavesdrop on some of those conversations because just the emotions have been incredibly intense for a year now.
Tell me this, and we spoke about this a second ago. There was no pandemic 101 class that we attended to prepare us for this. And if it was, it was the 8:00 AM class.
I wish, I know, I wish I'd taken that class in college.
Yeah, you were thrown into this. What have you learned?
Well, I learned that we have some incredible staff in CMS. Everyone from the superintendent to every single schoolteacher. And the work that they're doing is heroic. It was heroic before there was ever a pandemic, and it's heroic on steroids right now. Yes, we've had to change course so many times because the pandemic has unfolded in kind of a chaotic way. But definitely have learned a lot about about how to pull a team together in a crisis.
What would be your message to Team CMS, the students, teachers, and other staff, and the parents as every single school opens its doors, embrace all of those students coming back on campus?
Socially-distanced embrace.
Virtual hug.
To be responsible. And that's for the community, too. We've got to be smart. I mean, I'm hearing, I'm starting to hear anecdotes of families planning big spring break trips. Ugh, let's just be responsible because we're still in this pandemic. Kindness is so, so important. So be kind and be respectful.
Well, we certainly do appreciate your time, and we appreciate your insight as CMS students prepare to head back into the classroom with all campuses ready to welcome, I should say, Team CMS back.
Yeah, it's going to be good. I'm so, I'm glad that we're here. And, but yeah, we just all have to work together to make sure we stay safe.
Well, as we get ready to go back to school and we get ready to end this show, when I say back to school, back to the building, any final thoughts? Any last thoughts you want to offer our team and our family members of CMS?
Yes, I would strongly encourage us all, because this is really a community effort. And although the numbers, the metrics are moving in the right direction, by no means are we out of the woods. And so I implore us to continue to do those things to keep us safe. I really ask our parents to make sure that we do not send students who are sick to school. We are, we have reopened our schools for in-person learning. But we want to keep them open. And so that will be key in us being able to keep our schools open.
We'll be flexible and we'll be ready.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Students in CMS now have the option of returning to in-person learning at their school or continuing with virtual learning at their home. The steps that got us here put a top priority on the safety of all of our students and all of our staff. Thanks so much for joining us. We hope you learned something that will help you become an informed parent, an energized employee, or an engaged community member. Your support is important to the success of CMS. Be safe and take care. We'll see you next time for more insight.
We do this for sanitation purposes to kill all the, anything that's going on on the bus with germs and of course COVID.
So here are the iPad that everybody will get along with a charger.
It's different, but it is. I'm loving seeing the kids smile every day and being back at school. So I'm ready. We ready.
Meet Mr. and Mrs. Johnson and Mr. and Mrs. Johnson and Jordan and Jamie Johnson. Two beautiful babies born on the very same day. Each baby has a good chance of landing in a good place in life as long as one of them doesn't lose the zip code lottery. Like 1 million babies each year, Jamie's been born into a low-income family. And since Jamie's mom lacked access to good prenatal care, Jamie is much smaller than Jordan. And since they won't have access to brain developing activities found in high-quality childcare, low-income children like Jamie will be two times more likely to experience developmental delays. It probably won't surprise you that by their third birthday, Jamie's been exposed to a lot fewer words than Jordan. A whole lot fewer. And I imagine Jamie's fourth birthday won't be much better. By the time they reach kindergarten, Jamie will have already fallen behind Jordan in language and pre-reading skills by 12 to 14 months. And getting to school on a regular basis will be perhaps Jamie's biggest challenge. Unfortunately, a myriad of health, transportation, and housing problems will cause between 5 and 7 and 1/2 million Jamies to be chronically absent this year. But with summer right around the corner, you'd think Jamie would have plenty of time to catch up with Jordan then. Sadly, summer presents new challenges for Jamie. A mountain of challenges. You see, every summer, Jordan's learning will evolve by a month because of access to libraries, field trips, and camps, while Jamie will lose two months of school learning every summer because good habits such as reading haven't been reinforced. By the time they reach third grade, Jamie will be between two and two and a half school years behind Jordan in critical reading skills. And how much more likely is Jamie to drop out than Jordan because he can't read at a third-grade level? 13 times more likely. And the results of which are frankly catastrophic. Wait just one minute there, folks. The story doesn't end right there. Fortunately for Jamie and Jordan and all of us, there's a whole lot of folks out there that believe neither luck nor lottery nor zip codes should dictate Jamie's future. Who also believe that our schools can't do it alone. Luckily, there are leaders, organizations, and good people out there that are dedicated to believing in a whole lot more. The solution right now is relatively straightforward if we can commit to four things. Number one, we need to make sure our kids are healthy and ready for school. Number two, we need to ensure they grow up in a word-and-book-enriched environment. Number three, we need to engage them in healthy and educational activities over the summer. Number four, we need to make sure that Jamie attends school every single day. Because at the end of the day, you and I both know that lotteries, zip codes, and plain old dumb luck don't really author our children's future. We do.
Good evening. I now call the March 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education to order. And I will now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion from Thelma Byers Bailey, second from Carol Sawyer. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Oh, the board clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. So that motion passed eight to zero, Madam Clerk. And, oh, any opposed? Okay. Now the motion passed eight to zero. Okay, colleagues, we have one public hearing tonight regarding proposed changes to policy GCOA, teacher contracts. And the rules are as follows. Each speaker will be called to speak one at a time. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to address the board. Groups will have 10 minutes. Each speaker may only talk about the topic that is the subject of the public hearing. Individual student matters or specific personnel matters may not be discussed. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Profanity or other inappropriate language will not be allowed. And the board reserves the right to cut off and mute any speaker who violates these rules. And I believe we have only one speaker for this public hearing, Arthur Griffin. So Mr. Griffin, if you would please proceed. As soon as we can bring you on the screen. There you are. You look like you're at a game.
Is he muted?
So we're ready whenever you are, Mr. Griffin.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Winston. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. This is my second time asking you to consider not revising your contract for teacher contracts, your performance requirements. I tried to, the first time, articulate instructional reasons, a focus towards pedagogy, some indication as to what the expectations would be in the classroom, wanting to have highly effective teachers. Subsequent to that, though, either the school board to the executive team or the executive team to the school board decide to double down and defend the status quo or at least try to defend in such a way to say there's no real reason to have higher standards for our classroom teachers. The process that occurred after my presentation was a stark example of governance that is misaligned to practice in terms of what you're looking for to have happen in the classroom. The second point I'd like to raise is that the issue regarding inter-rater reliability, dissimilarity that the staff shared with you raises a significant HR problem, in my opinion. Over a third of your schools have potential HR issues around evaluations. Either principals are not responsible or your area superintendents are not responsible or the central office not responsible. But somebody has to be held accountable. And that's when you start putting out fires. When the governance structure isn't aligned to your policies and your goals and your practices, you end up with this end result. We're all in this because of children. We all want the very best for our children. And again, I've offered to you on a couple of occasions to assist in any way I can. But I think you have a bigger issue as it relates to HR if, in fact, what was said in that memo is accurate. I think that the school board, in particular the superintendent, should take a very serious look at inter-rater reliability, dissimilarity, and try to get that on track. If you're ever going to have highly effective teachers and if you want to move the performance of our school students in a positive direction in an accelerated way. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I hope that you will consider leaving the policy as is or at least have an opportunity for greater debate in terms of what the implications will be, one way or the other. Thank you, Madam Chairman, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Madam Clerk, did we receive any emails regarding proposed revisions to policy GCOA for the hearing tonight?
Madam Chair, there are none.
Okay, well then, thank you, Madam Clerk. And I now declare this public hearing closed. Our next item is our consent agenda. Is there a motion that the board approved the consent agenda items? Okay, motion from Margaret Marshall, second from Carol Sawyer. And before we move to a vote, does any board member wish to pull any part of this item for individual consideration? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk. Our consent agenda is approved by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Okay, colleagues, we have three action items tonight. The first is consideration of revisions to policy GCOA. And I will turn to Board Member Lenora Ship, who is Chair of the Policy Committee, to make this motion.
Members of the board, the item before us tonight is consideration of revision to policy GCOA, teacher contracts. Madam Chair, I believe substantive changes are needed to the proposed policy revisions. Therefore, I move to defer action at this time and refer policy GCOA back to the Policy Committee for further review and consideration.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
That's a lot of seconds. I heard it from Jennifer Delahara first. Any discussion before we move? Would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Ship?
I will speak to the motion. We need to ensure that we do what is in the best interest of all our students. The core business of the school is teaching and learning, making sure our students achieve at highest academic levels. This is encumbered on us, the board, to ensure that teachers in every classroom are skilled, highly effective. Teachers make the difference. I know we have great teachers in schools and they should be recognized for their achievement at accomplished levels. This must be true for all schools, all classrooms in this district. That is our goal, our mission as we continue to work to close achievement gaps and provide opportunities for students to graduate productive citizens in a global society, workforce, college, and career-ready. I have been a classroom teacher in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools and I have been a principal. So I know the critical importance of this policy. So I agree with this motion. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or debate? Anybody else? Well, I'll just say that I just want to thank you for bringing it back for more work to the committee. I've had a little bit of discomfort with it. And I know it's taken, the board has been very thoughtful about how to handle this. And, you know, don't want to rush it. So I just thank you for taking that action. All those in favor of the motion, please let it be known by a show of hands. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes nine to zero. Okay, our next action item is proposed modifications to the instructional plan as adopted on March 9th, 2021. And before the board acts, I'm going to turn to the superintendent to introduce this item and to make a recommendation.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair, board members. We shared Friday afternoon that tonight will be another step forward toward a return to a more normal type of school operations. And here to discuss our recommendation for returning our middle and high school students to a more frequent in-person instruction is our Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Matt Hayes. Dr. Hayes.
Thank you, Superintendent Winston and board. Appreciate you. Privilege to be here with you this evening as we go through another conversation around our plans for our students across CMS. And thank you for your time. Quickly, I would like to just take a few minutes and look at the changes that have taken place since March 9th, just to kind of catch everybody up to speed. So first, on March 9th, you'll see here that the CMS Board of Education approved the current calendar that's in place at this time. On March 10th, Senate Bill 220 was read into the chamber and was passed later that afternoon. It then moved into the Senate Bill, then into the House, where it also was passed and sent to the governor on the 11th of March. The governor signed the Senate Bill 220 into law at 5:27 PM. On March 15th, the State Board of Education adopts guidance to the Senate Bill 220 and includes it in the North Carolina Toolkit. So I just want to highlight a couple of things here on this slide. First of all, because of Senate Bill 220 and the State Board implications for CMS, Plan A, which is the State Board now defined as at least four days of in-person instruction, must be offered for all students in grades K-5. Plan A is required to be offered for all students in grades 6 through 12 with an individualized education plan or a 504 plan. All students enrolled in the full remote academy may choose to opt into in-person instruction per their applicable grade level plan, and students that receive in-person instruction may choose to opt into the full remote academy. Plan C is no longer an option for any of the school districts, but the superintendent may still transition an individual school or part of the school to full remote instruction for COVID-related reasons, but not the entire district. So I also want to do a follow-up here with... Excuse me, back up here in just a second. Also, we do understand that today there were changes by the governor to the Strong Schools' Public Health Toolkit. While today's actions by the governor doesn't change what we are here asking the board to approve tonight, staff will be looking at any changes and operational issues to see if any changes are needed at the staff level. So as part of the state decision, as a result of Senate Bill 220 and update on the Strong Schools' North Carolina Public School Toolkit, the district must, one, offer families the opportunity to choose between in-person instruction and full remote academy. Parents have until April the 1st to notify CMS if they want to change between the full remote academy and in-person instruction. CMS will adhere to the parental request once we return from spring break on April the 12th. Offer students with an IEP and a 504 plan, individualized education plan, or a 504 plan, whether they are currently attending in-person or full remote academy, the opportunity to attend in-person under Plan A, the same timeline as above applies. And with a potential shift to Plan A, the Board of Education will consider revisiting the temporary closures of the after-school enrichment programs, which we will discuss later this evening. So the recommendation that came as a result of several cabinet members huddling up, also with our learning community superintendents and our equity superintendents, and then being able to get a little bit of reflection of this recommendation with our principals, is as follows. Beginning Monday, April the 12th, shift all in-person calendars to Plan A. Students will attend in-person four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and remotely one day a week, which would be on Wednesday. Beginning May 10th and through the end of the school year, students in Plan A will attend in-person five days a week. Beginning March the 5th, March, excuse me, apologize, March the 24th, families have the option to choose full remote academy, FRA, as an alternative to Plan A in-person instruction. Also, beginning on March the 24th, families have the option to move from the full remote academy to Plan A in-person instruction. One thing that is key here that we definitely want to make sure all of our families hear loud and clearly is that if you want to remain in your current modality of learning, you do not need to do anything at this time. Once again, if you want to remain in your current modality of learning, you do not need to do anything at this time. Also, if we do not hear from you, we will stay, you will stay in the current learning option, in-person or full remote academy. Once again, if you do not, we do not hear from you, you will stay in the current learning option of in-person or full remote academy that you are currently in. Shifts into or out of the full remote academy are effective on April the 12th. Now, I want to share with you just for a few minutes some of the things that were under consideration, once again, by cabinet members, learning community superintendents, equity superintendents, and also principals. We first looked at a hybrid between A and B, and then also, what about Plan A for all? We landed on Plan A for all for a couple of reasons. Opportunity for all students, not just students with an IEP and a 504, the opportunity to attend school as frequently as possible. There would also be implications to scheduling, also transition times, and also social distancing challenges that could exist if we remained in B at the school level. Transportation, there was an option in Senate Bill 220 where you were able to utilize Option A for buses and remain in Option B for schools. Increasing the number of students coming in by buses did not assist us in making sure that we could provide adequate social distancing inside the classrooms at the designated point of having six feet distancing between students under Plan A. Therefore, we landed on, I mean, in Plan B, therefore, we landed in Plan A. So a couple of school actions that will take place if this is approved this evening. Upon the school board decision, the district-wide communication to the decision will be sent to parents and community on the evening of the 23rd this evening. Principals will send connect ed and parent change requests for templates on Wednesday, March the 24th tomorrow. In times past, we've used surveys, we've used Qualtrics, which is a company that we use in which to create those surveys. In the past, because of the tight turnaround, we do not have that option. Therefore, we are utilizing the resources that we have, that is, the schoolhouse themselves, to directly communicate this with their families, and we appreciate all of our principals for taking this task on. We're requesting that all families should complete the parent change requests form by the end of the day on Friday, the 26th. Now, once again, as I stated in Senate Bill 220, it does give them the opportunity to make that change up until April the 1st. We are asking, and pleading with our families, that if you are wanting to make a change, that you please complete the parent change request form that would be sent to you by your school by the end of the day on Friday, March the 26th. Why is this important? It's important for us to make sure that we have that by the 26th so we can do cleanup on Monday, and then prepare to go ahead and start making any changes around transportation, class schedules, unfortunately, if that is needed. Also, any type of pickup, drop-off, or anything that has to be done inside the building as we not only prepare to close out next week, but as everyone knows, we will be, that following week, we will be heading out on the, after the 1st, onto spring break, and then when we return on the 12th, from spring break, we will also be in potentially Plan A. EC and 504 case managers will follow up with parents on their caseloads for any student who has not submitted choices by the end of the day on Thursday, March 25th, just to double-check. Daily reminders for student change requests form completion will be sent through multiple communications throughout the school, which includes but not limited to connect eds, also posting through their PTA, PTOs that they have, and also any type of organizations that they have within the school that has social media accounts. So one of the key things here is that the CDC, as we stated before, has made some changes, and the governor has made some changes to North Carolina Toolkit. We will be revisiting those and operational stances that we may need to be making over the next couple of days, but we will be reviewing that. One thing that is clear here in Plan A, that it requires minimal social distancing in the classrooms and on buses where students are sitting stationary. I will say to you that schools will, should utilize, what we believe is that schools should utilize space to accommodate distancing to the greatest extent possible in the classrooms. This is important to us. In hallways and areas where students congregate and they are moving, we will still adhere to social distancing guidelines. So at this point in time, I will turn it back to you, Superintendent Winston, and we have several individuals that will be joining us to answer any questions that the board may have, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hayes. And if I could, Madam Chair, before turning it back to you, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points, that it is my recommendation that in the best interest of many of our students, for whom remote learning does not serve well, that our board members vote to return our middle and our high school students to Plan A. As Dr. Hayes mentioned, this will have our middle and our high school students in our buildings for in-person instruction four days a week, with one day set aside for remote instruction. This recommendation is for this to begin after students and staff members return from spring break, so this calendar would take effect on April the 12th. And so, Madam Chair, also, and board members, wanted to just highlight that this decision, this recommendation reflects above all things what is in the best interest educationally from a social and emotional standpoint for our students. We know that some have thrived in remote learning, but for many, that option is no substitute for being in classrooms with teachers, staff, and peers. And so, this decision, as Dr. Hayes mentioned, will also bring CMS into compliance with legislation introduced the day after our board voted on our current calendar. With that, Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Hey, any questions? Dr. Jones?
Yes, I'd simply like to ask the question, are we sure that we can implement class-sized distancing with fidelity? Having worked in schools, middle school and high school, they're going to be hugged up for sure.
Yes, ma'am. You're going to...
Last changes in all of that?
Yes, ma'am. You're going to hear me throughout many of these questions tonight talk specifically about a couple of things that are unknowns. One is, how many students may transition in or out of full remote academy into in-person? How many may transition from in-person to full remote? And we may stay the same. Those are numbers we don't know at this point in time. What I do know is that we've got very competent principals out there who up to, for over a year now, have made decisions to provide their students the best environment they can to learn when they've been in-person in the schoolhouse, and make sure that they're maintaining all safety protocols while doing so. I put my trust in them to continue with that same pattern and to reach out through their learning community superintendents if they need direct assistance from the district as a whole, to make sure that they have that support.
Okay, Ms. Sawyer?
I've heard a number of concerns about meal times, breakfast and lunch, because I don't, I have not received assurances that we can maintain six feet social distance during meals. What accommodations are we making? Will students be outside? Is that permissible? Is that encouraged? Are private school partners erect tents outside for meals and instruction? How are we handling that?
Really allowing schools to have maximum flexibility in which to provide those services to our students, which would include but not limited to being in the cafeteria, especially as we start to pull back some of the layers of the new guidance that's been established to us, and we've even looked as far as having students facing the same direction when they're in areas that are, like an indoor, as far as a cafeteria. We are requesting and looking into multiple opportunities for students to have outside areas to eat. But once again, that's going to be at the discretion of the principal. We will not mandate anything because each building looks completely different than another building, and they know the safety pieces that go along with that as well.
But if a parent has concerns about whether during meal times there will be six-foot social distancing, can you tell high school, middle school parents that, yes, their student will have six-foot social distancing?
I will say that when I walked on several of our campuses this past week as students were on that campus, I would encourage our families of high school and middle school students to reiterate to them before leaving the house that distancing itself is important to make sure that we are self-monitoring how close we are to each other. I saw high schoolers that were getting off buses and meeting each other in the quads and hugs and high fives and everything else that were happening, and I saw staff that were saying, "Separate," you know, "social distancing," and calling that out continuously. So I think it's a great point. I know the staff will continue to do that, but once again, I encourage all of our families across the district to make sure that you're having that conversation with your students, not only in the morning but in the evenings, to make sure that they do understand that this, this is a community effort, and that community effort starts at home, and making sure that they know proper social distancing while they're at school as well, just as they would if they were out in any other common area.
Can I ask another, or we...
You can ask another.
So with the changes in, potential changes in populations, should families be prepared to maybe have a change in teaching, staff, teacher?
You know, once again, that's going to depend on how many students transition. We may not have any students transition at all. We may have just a few. Also, it depends on how the school itself is set up to receive those students. There's been no systemic approach that we've taken where we've mandated a certain way that schools are set up, because as we talked about early on, as we started this, you have some schools that have 10% of their students in full remote, you have other schools that have 45, almost 50% of their students in full remote. Those two schools operating are going to look drastically different in how they're able to change those schedules. Could there be? Most definitely. Do we hope there isn't? That would be our hope, is that we would not have to make those drastic changes.
Because I think there's, there might be benefit in changing instructors if you can dedicate a teacher to do remote and relieve two or three teachers of hybrid instruction?
Yes, ma'am.
Will this, will we have, if families submit their choice on April 1st, will transportation be ready on April 12th? So transportation will be provided?
So if, where there, I will say, yes, with a little bit of kind of wondering, because the main thing there is we've got to make sure that we get it into the system, and it has to have, at least I believe, sorry, Ms. Turner, but 24, 24, 48 hours in which to load, and then they've got to create the routes. Now, for any of our students that are in person, that are in person in some rotation, right, they're not in full remote, any student that is in person in a rotation already has a bus. All were, and those routes were, as I stated last time, Adam Johnson and his team complement them. They've done a great job in basically planning for the long haul, which is, we don't have different routes for each group, we have the same route, so we'll just be adding those students onto those buses. Ms. Turner, do you have anything else you want to add to that? Yes, ma'am.
I would just simply say that if parents respond by Friday, the 26th, that will give us ample time to be able to make the preparations that we need to make, to make those adjustments.
Thank you. And just one quick question that parents have raised with me about playgrounds, whether those are still off limits, or whether they can, are those, has guidance changed on that?
That actually will be something we're revisiting, because that was directly called out in the governor's changes today, so we'll be looking at that over the next couple of days. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ship?
Yes, I did have one about transportation, a little more specific, and how are you working with bus drivers in terms of this idea that they are not going to be socially distanced pretty much at all on the bus, in terms of students sitting together as family, or the little ones being in the front, and how are you looking at this? Because I think this is really critical now that we are going to bring more students on the bus.
So the planning phase, it will all really depend upon the ridership. Once families make a decision and they decide, you know, whether or not their kids will be returning, so it will depend on the ridership, and the bus drivers will take their best opportunity to ensure that they are socially distancing them based upon how many are on the bus. So it really just depends, like Matt says, about the responses that we receive back. And so a lot of this, you know, we can't really make decisions about until we receive it, but they will do the best that they can based upon the ridership.
And are we still talking about attestation forms and those being there when they come to the bus, or what are we looking at? Because that's going to be a lot now with more students coming on the bus.
So one of the things that we are asking area transportation managers to do is to talk with the area bus drivers to ensure that they are going over with them what the rules, the procedures are, and what the expectations are. We are also encouraging them to go to the schools and talk with the school staff, the principal in particular, to get the support of the staff to encourage that we get those forms as we need them.
Okay. And my other question, and this is about staff, and where are we with staffing in terms of needing to cover teachers now that you're going to have so many more students coming back? They have used dispersed, dispersing students, covering each other's classrooms. What is that going to look like now when we're in Plan A?
Yeah, good evening, and thank you for that question. As it comes to, as, when it comes down to assigning teachers to different classes, that certainly is more of an academic principal-type question. But in terms of staffing, we look to be in pretty good shape. I mean, our metrics dashboard, we're going to be going over that later on this evening, but we do remain in green for instructional staffing. We're down to about vacancies in around the low twenties right now for teachers. So that's very good. We're continuing to actively recruit teachers into positions, and we've taken on some extraordinary efforts when it comes to substitute staffing. Some of that, you'll have to, excuse me while I look down at my notes, I want to share some of the specific things that we've done to that end, just even since our last board meeting when we had the opportunity to address it briefly with substitutes. So in February, we've hired 81 new CMS substitutes. 125 people have applied already in March to be substitutes. So this is fantastic news and a big credit to the people in talent acquisition specifically who are working to recruit new people. An email was sent out to all of our retirees advertising and promoting substitute positions. An email was also sent out to inactive substitutes to make sure that they understand and know that we are back, that we are in-person, and we need, and we need help and we want support. An email was also sent to external candidates, over 300, who have applied to our alternative licensure program. These are teachers who are interested, or potential teachers, I should say, and interested in crossing over from other industries in education. So not only could they make fantastic substitutes for us, but they're also ideally future teacher candidates for us. So we're very excited about that. So those are just some of the things that we are highlighting. We've also, at over 80 of our schools who have demonstrated the most need, have been able to leverage funding to be able to provide temporary positions, up to four temporary positions that can be used on a daily basis at each one of these school sites so that in the event subs are not filled through either our current vendor that provides substitutes or there's a need for other help at the school because classes may split up, what have you, and there's extra help that's needed, these positions can be advertised in our current substitute management system for our current pool of subs, again, that we're continuing to bolster and make more robust to be able to pick up on a daily basis. So those are changes that we've been able to make available to principals immediately, and we feel that we're going to be able to offer that much-needed relief when it comes to staffing. And again, I know I talked a lot about subs. That's not to underscore the importance of having an effective and qualified teacher in every classroom. We're still working to accommodate teachers to the extent that we can, and we continue to plan to do that. We will continue to do that for the remainder of this school year and beyond.
Thank you so much. It's really good.
Any more questions?
No, I'm through.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Brianna. Ms. Fowler?
Hi, this is Brianna Fowler speaking. I just have a quick question. I know the last time that we were speaking, there is a big push of how many students are going to opt-in to going back in-person. I know that the superintendent still has the power to shut down part of the school or shut down certain schools to be full remote. If there is a school that too many students, I don't want to say too many, but there's an influx of students that are going back in-person and the school is not adequate or in the correct shape to house those students, that could be from the lack of supplies, the, the school or the, the classrooms not being able to social distance properly. Say there's 30 students in a class, therefore the, these classroom wouldn't be able to social distance. How would we address that issue?
Ms. Fowler, so I will, I will address that. So when the board voted to give me the authority to close individual schools or subsets of a particular school, there were three specific reasons for which that could occur. I think the reason you just lifted up, while a very valid reason, did not fall into that particular category. So what we'll do is we will look at other opportunities where we can meet the needs of those particular students. But I just want to be mindful that, I have to be very specific, that the three criteria was related to, you know, working with the, our Mecklenburg County Public Health Department or receiving a directive from the Health Department to close a particular school. The other issue was around staffing. That was the third criteria. So we'll be ever mindful of what you just lifted up so that we can accommodate all students in a safe manner.
Thank you. And my second question is similar to Ms. Schiff in regards to the busing. For the buses, I know that some of the HVAC systems, as I believe it was two meetings ago, we were discussing the HVAC systems. What are we going to do about the busing situation now? Are we just going to let down the windows? Also, if a student has not gotten on the bus for the first two weeks, will they no longer receive busing?
I am not sure about the answer to that question, but I would be glad to find it out and get back with you.
Thank you.
Well, that was, was it one question or was that two questions?
It was two. It was, the first question was about the HVAC systems in regards to the busing. And then the second question was if a student has not gotten on the bus for transportation, however they are in need for busing. Say, the first two weeks that they return back to school, they don't ride it, but then they are in need of transportation, will they receive it or no?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that second question. I would think with the first one, anytime we can let the windows down to let fresh air in, that's one of the things that we even talked about doing in buildings, to let the airflow so that, you know, transmission of any virus or whatever's in the air, that that might lessen, that might lessen it. So it might not, I'm, I'm...
Sorry. And I have not, I have not done this. Ernest Winston, I apologize. I haven't done this one. But, so, so Ms. Fowler, I think where you're coming from with the second question is we do have a practice at the beginning of the school year. If students do not ride their assigned bus, we typically will remove them from that route. This obviously is not a normal school year, and we're bringing back students for, we're making a recommendation to bring back students in-person for middle and high school under Plan A. And so we'll have to revisit whether or not we want to follow that same exact protocol that we would typically follow in a normal school year.
And I think she was saying too, because I'm very familiar with that, is the timeframe it would take. Sometimes parents are very concerned because they have to wait so long to get a bus. It used to be like two weeks before they could get transportation once they requested it. If, let's say, they did not earlier request it, now they need to be on the bus. The guideline was it could take up to two weeks to get that child's bus transportation. And I think you were asking, how would that work in terms of now? So how soon could a parent, a family realize they're going to have their child on the bus?
Thank you, Ms. Schiff, for that, for clarifying that. And we will work to expedite that request. We certainly want to be cognizant of the timeframe that we have left to the, you know, the end of the school year. And if we can, we will be as flexible as possible to make the accommodations that are necessary to meet the family's needs, so.
And Ms. Fowler, last thing I will say to that is, is please share on your blog, as we found out last time, with all of our students, that if they need transportation, to please make sure that they send that to the schoolhouse. And if they decide that they're not going to ride in the first couple of weeks and then need it later, to communicate directly with the school as well, just to make sure that they know that that's happening.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. De La Hara?
So, I, a new question I have to sort of follow up on that. Of course, we put out an all-call request to the community because of some labor staffing issues that, that came up in November, and a lot of families chose, you know, to, to not have their bus. I understand why we're reopening this, and that may need to change. At the same time, though, does that present another potential obstacle for us if, of many families, you know, opt for busing transportation, that we might end up in a labor shortage issue?
So, thank you. That's a great question, and that was one of the first thing I asked Adam Johnson and his team. He says that, no, we are able to, even though we are around, I think, about 86 drivers shorter than we were, that we had last year, whatever, we will still be able to, to, to transport all of our students if needed to the schoolhouse. Now, what that would mean is that does, that means that there would be delays that, that would potentially occur. Nothing that's a greater of a 30, 45-minute delay either way, but that could, that could be the byproduct of that. But we will still be able to maintain ridership, and that's with everyone coming back. So I don't know that that's, that anyone is planning on that degree-changing, but if it did, that was a question that we asked before we made the suggestion to Plan A.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Another transportation question. We are still in the, the red zone, if you will, from my understanding, as it relates to cases per 100,000. And I thought that the CDC guidance, as far as the busing, was that there still be distancing on the busing, on, on buses. Is that not what we are following? Did the governor's new, I guess he produced some information today, toolkit, is that changing that?
So under, under Plan A, and I'll just, I want to just make sure I state this correctly, but under Plan A requires minimal social distancing, classrooms and buses. We are going on the fact, we are stating that we will utilize the space to accommodate distancing to the greatest extent possible in both classrooms and on the buses.
So choosing Plan A as it relates to the toolkit, not necessarily CDC guidance and what their recommendations are?
We have to follow the toolkit. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. On eating, I'm going back, piggybacking off of Ms. Sawyer's question. So we have 30 students potentially in a class that everyone needs to eat. You mentioned using, utilizing other parts of the building, like maybe the cafeteria. What about for like our mobile units that might be further away from a said cafeteria? I mean, how, how, how are we going to manage that? I've received a lot of concern from families and also students, high school students, who just wrote and said, you know, "I, I feel comfortable coming in two days a week with fewer students in my class. I'm not feeling comfortable about having, you know, 30 or, or even 20 in an enclosed space eating, having the mask down for 15, 20 minutes." So tell me a little bit more about what our plans are for that.
I know that the plans for the students are really up to the principal. It depends on how many students are in the school. And I know that they will be looking to use various areas of the school, just as someone said earlier, including maybe outside if it's appropriate at that particular time. But it really just depends on the total number of, of kids at each school, and each school is probably different.
Do you feel confident that the principals have run through a scenario? I mean, we don't even know how many students we're going to have because we, we haven't, you know, given them the choice to opt-in or opt-out, but it seems to me that there's a lot of unknowns, and we won't know if, you know, Teacher Smith needs to use the cafeteria at the same time Teacher Garcia does. I mean, you know, there's a lot of scenarios that need to be worked out.
You're on point with that. I, I will state, though, that for the last year, there's been 1,001 different scenarios that have taken place, and our principals and their staff have maintained a high quality of not just what I would consider the instructional side, the social-emotional, but also the safety factors that are in place in all of the schools. So, yes, they're working through their learning community superintendents, they're making sure that they have the resources they need, they're running sketch drawings, they're running, you know, just putting different things in different places and so forth to just make sure they're going to be able to do that. Will that, the big, the big thing here that we don't know yet is the number of students that may shift. We may not have any numbers change at all.
Right.
They may stay the same, and then we, we just continue to operate. We may have a shift one way or the other, and that's where, you know, the agility of our principals and their staff will be challenged because they're going to have to then really make sure that they're, they're able to pivot and do what they need to do to be able to address each of the needs of the students. So, but I have full confidence in all of our principals to be able to do that, and any questions that they need, any concerns that they may have going directly through their learning community superintendent to get the support that they need to, to solve those issues.
One last question as it relates to HR with the, I just wanted to clarify because you mentioned something interesting, Ms. Pejot, about, did you say four? This is the first time I'm hearing of this, I believe. Apologize if it's been brought to my attention before and I forgot. Four, access to four extra staff? What was that again, that you were hiring or?
So temporary help in terms of being able to cover, for, for example, substitute vacancies that weren't picked up. As you may know, in some of our schools, we have contracted with Kelly Educational Services to provide substitutes. So in those situations, our hands are really tied in terms of sending out, or they had been, in terms of deploying CMS subs. So we've essentially opened that up and created a way by which principals can post generic vacancies, so they're not necessarily tied to a teacher absence, so that if they can get people to pick up those jobs through our CMS system and our CMS subs, then they can be deployed to either backfill positions that were not picked up by substitutes at that school or to be utilized for other help, you know, helping transition kids from location to location, supervising children in different situations, assisting with other needs, symptom screening, other, whatever is needed at that school site in terms of extra hands, extra support.
Yeah, or potential lunchtime coverage. Because if I've got half of my class heading out to the cafeteria to eat while the other half stays in, so we can accommodate social distancing, then some, you can't, teacher can't be split in half, right?
That's right.
So it does seem that we need extra support. Do, have the principals already received communication on how to access this?
Yes, they have. This was specifically support designed for Title I schools, that specific initiative that I'm talking about. So they did receive communication on that, I believe it was earlier, the days are blending, so I believe it was in the last few days where they received that notification that they could start to implement that immediately.
Have we utilized this service already?
So I don't have that data to be able to share yet. It's still so new, but that is something that we have on tapped track for a number of reasons. We need to track it. But we have, we have the ability to do that because it's set up in our current substitute system that we use to deploy subs with.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're excited about it.
Ms. Byers Bailey?
Madam Chair, can I, can I, I just want to add one thing. I thought Ms. De La Hara raised a really good point, and I will say, as Dr. Hayes mentioned about our principal and, our principals and their ability to be flexible and adaptable and creative, given whatever scenario they're presented with, I just, I also want to remind families that if they believe that is of enough concern, as you had expressed, that some families may feel like that is concerning for them, then we do have, they have the option of reverting from, you know, in-person learning to the full-remote academy. Obviously, that choice, that needs to be done by April 1st, but certainly if families have enough heartburn and feel like that's a possible scenario that their child could encounter, I would seriously urge them to look at that as a potential option.
And, and if you don't mind me responding, is that okay, Madam Chair? I appreciate that greatly. I'm afraid that lands, however, on much of the public as, well, if this doesn't work for you, then you can go full remote. And I don't think that was your intention, but make no mistake that we have a large group of families in our community who, who want to be in-person. They just want to be in-person when we're not in the red, and they want to be in-person when maximum social distancing can happen. And so when we do move to this Plan A, there will be families that, sure, they have this choice, but for many, it will feel like a forced choice. And I just, I think it's important that we acknowledge that.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Ms. Byers Bailey? Ms. Byers Bailey, and then Ms. Marshall. And Dr. Jones, if you don't mind, I'll go to the first rounds and then come back to you for the second round. And, okay, so Ms. Byers Bailey, Ms. Marshall, then Ms. Cheek.
Thank you. Thelma Byers Bailey here. I have been listening to, one of the first comments that really struck me was when you said that one of the things you were considering was having all the children in the cafeteria facing in the same direction. facing in the same direction rather than sitting face-to-face around a table. That, to me, sounded very, very forward-thinking in terms of how the virus spreads, you know, when the masks are off, and that if the person behind you happens to have the virus and you're, but you're there sitting to your back, then it's less likely you're going to contract anything that, any germ that they might be spreading while their mask is off. I really appreciate that thoughtfulness. The last couple of days, I've been hearing CDC, health professionals saying that now that they, you know, when we first started this, they all thought that we had to do the six feet and then nothing less, and that anything less than that was going to be detrimental to our students regardless of whether they had on a face mask or not. It seems to me now that as they have gathered more information and done, gotten more responses back from studies, now I'm beginning to hear from a variety of sources that three feet might be adequate. But we're, you know, and I heard one, you know, one of your comments is, we're going to do, we're going to do, keep the students separated to the best of our ability. And so, I wanted to just be clear, are you considering the possibility of using the three-foot standard as students come back in and the students, and the population gets more crowded?
So, right now, we're utilizing the greatest extent that we can, social distance. But in the governor's, the, one of the adjustments that was made to the toolkit today is referencing the distance from six feet to three feet, so we'll be reviewing that over the next couple of days and then getting that information out to our principals and our families across the district.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make the parents to understand very clearly that there is a distance, the distance that we may be looking at is something less than six feet.
Yes, ma'am.
According to the most recent studies out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall?
I've got a few questions, sort of popcorn around, and one more in transportation. We may have covered this, but I just, I want to, to talk about this, as I think Ms. De La Hara mentioned, that some time ago, back in November, December, when we were having trouble with staffing, we asked families to opt out of transportation, and so they have continued to do that as, as we have moved into these, these different phases. I know some of those families might be interested in opting back in. Where, you know, as we're getting some, some new, new indication on routes, is that a possibility for those folks to be able to do that?
You want me to? Come on up. There you go. So, once again, you know, definitely, I think, requesting that, the big thing there when we asked our families to do that is that we were under the 24 students per bus in Plan B, so we definitely couldn't exceed that. Because we're in Plan A, we do not have the social distancing requirements that we had before, although we will, once again, greatest extent possible, have that in place to provide that social distancing. So, the opportunity for parents to be able to opt back into transportation where before they did not at this point in time is higher than it was before, based specifically on Plan B going to Plan A, and that was one of the, the topics of discussion as we looked at the hybrid compared to the full Plan A, and which landed us on the full Plan A.
Okay.
And again, that's one of the reasons why we were hoping to get the responses back from the parents as quickly as possible so that we can plan accordingly and run the routes as well as notify the parents.
Okay, okay. So, I think just in full transparency, to make sure folks know that a six-foot distancing that had been observed on the bus, if we go to Plan A, will not be, more than likely not be. So, I think families can make some choices there, too, on whether or not they want to continue to opt out because of the fact there's going to be less space, there are going to be more students on that bus. So, that, I think that's a consideration families need to be aware of and make.
Yeah. Families should also be aware of the fact that bus drivers will also have hand sanitizer, they'll have disposable masks, and they will continue with their cleaning protocols every day.
Okay.
Just as they've been doing throughout the year.
And I think, I heard a presentation by a doctor with the CDC yesterday in a, in a virtual conference that many of us attended, and they indicated even if you, if you pull the window down an inch, that that really does a great deal in terms of ventilation. So, there are some cheap alternatives to help us out. So, so we'll take advantage of that during this period of time when fortunately it's not so hot, too. So, I just want to make folks aware, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, opening windows is, is an easy fix, but I do think we have to use all the tools in our toolkit, and an easy and cheap one is certainly one you reach for the first, so.
And that is correct. I think COVID risk mitigation requires a multi-level approach, and what I was trying to say earlier was, you know, when you're introducing that fresh air, you're diluting the air, and that's one of the things that, you know, they talked about early on. You know, many recommendations were, if you were getting together, to do it outside where the air is flowing. And so, you want to just continue to have that fresh air into the facility.
And I think that, I think that going back to the spacing conversation that Ms. Byers-Bailey had, in A, we are really looking now at a three-foot distancing which is compliant with the toolkit, but it is not six-foot distancing, obviously. And so, I know that in, in many of our schools, and several in my district are very, very large. In fact, I have the largest high school in the state in my district, and, and people like to go to that school. So, we're going to have a lot of people that want, students that want to come back, and that's a good thing. We want them to come back, but want everybody to be aware that there will be a lot of, a lot of folks there. So, we, in terms of a classroom, where we had had some limits on that in the past with six-foot distancing, now I would assume if you had a limit of 16 in a classroom, which I heard used a lot, that you could have 32 in a three-foot distancing scenario. Is that a fair assumption, that we would see that many students in a classroom?
Easy answer is yes. You could. I will also, just, just to make sure everyone knows that, you know, under Plan A, there are no, inside a classroom, there is not a distance requirement. The, so, so inside the classroom, that's where we'll utilize the greatest extent possible to separate the students to make sure that they have distancing between them.
And, and sort of to reference this, this, this position that we heard yesterday, they indicated that their, their main concerns were mealtime, as we have discussed, and class changes, and so they were not as hard and fast as the distancing guidelines are being updated on what was going on inside the classroom, and frankly, what was going on inside the bus, assuming everybody's facing the same way.
Right.
So, I think in terms of setup and furniture, anything we can do to encourage that, and I know sometimes that doesn't work well with some of the setups that we've had in our classrooms, but everybody facing the same way, and masks are non-negotiable all the time, and that, that will have to be the case. So, you know, I think that there is, there's, there's a changing, there's a changing of guidance, and, and some folks are going to embrace that faster than others, but I do want to make people aware that we have, we have campuses that have a lot of students on them, and will have a lot of students on them. So, while this is a great thing to bring students back in, and I'm hopeful that that could happen, I just, I'm, I'm going to be very honest about that, that, that is, we're going to have a lot of high schools particularly, and, and some middle schools that'll, that'll have a lot of folks on them at the same time. I have some questions around the testing period, and I know we haven't really gotten there, so I'll save those to second round, but one more thing in terms of safety. We had talked about hiring contact tracers to help us with some gear funding that we had. Can you speak to that, or someone speak to that?
Yes, I'm happy to. Some of my colleagues on the, in the academic side of the shop have more details on this than I, and I'm sure they could supplement later, but we are working with NC EdCor to be able to hire contact tracers. They would be hired through our Department of HR and process so that we can deploy them out to schools as needed. So, yes, that, that plan is still underway.
Would that be, would we be, would that be pretty close to complete as we start back on with this plan on the 12th?
It's underway, but we're also, at the same time, reviewing the new guidance that has come out that has actually said that symptom screening is not necessarily required but recommended. So, we have to take all of this in and look at this that was just, again, released today to us, to make sure that we understand the extent to which we are going to be standing that up and supporting that, if there's going to be any changes to that and how that's going to look. So, I think it goes hand in hand, so, but that's the information I have right now. I'm happy to provide additional.
And to that point, would quarantine timeframes be changing as well? Is that, do we know if that's included in the toolkit?
So, potentially, right now, there have been no official changes to what it means for our quarantining or contact tracing protocols, and we would have to wait for the thumbs up from local health department authorities that are going to certainly go by what NCDHHS puts out, but there's been nothing to date, or to minute, I should say, that would, that would change what we are doing in terms of contact tracing right now.
Okay.
So, yeah, but more to come on that, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
And before I go to the next question, Ms. Cheek, I just want to reiterate something that I've heard a few times tonight for the public. That is, more new guidance came out today.
Today.
And, and so, just to walk us through, we had a painstakingly, you know, considered decision about our calendar change on March 9th. March 10th blew it all up with the governor and the state senator, the, the president of the Senate came out with their press conference, that bill that made it through the House, or made it through and was signed into law. And so, we got to the end of that week, and we thought, okay, got a whole new set of rules, let's adapt to that set of rules. Monday, we were like ready to adapt to that, and then Tuesday of last week, the State Board of Education issued an update to the toolkit, which blew things up again. So, last week, we had to sit down, recalibrate everything, and I just want the public to understand that this is, this is the reality of the decisions that we're making where the, what we have to comply with continues to change as the science gets updated. So, Ms. Cheek?
Thank you, and that answers one of the people that just sent me a text that says, please, just make a plan and stick to it. And I said, this one would be on the governor and the Senate, but I'm happy we're doing it. That said, I'm happy we're hopefully voting on this. So, I'll start with Dr. Hayes, I guess. I've got a couple. I was going to put Ms. Peugeot up there, but I'll give you a break for a second. So, should we just stay in Plan B but use the information and bring back all the 504 and IEP students? Would that not flip us into Plan A pretty much, like with enough kids in the school to probably be in a Plan A?
So, theoretically, when we started looking at the numbers and over 19,000 students that are served with either an IEP or a 504 in our school district, it definitely would tip us over, definitely on our buses and potentially in our classrooms, which therefore we would be unable to maintain the distancing that was required to be in B, which would force us into A. And that was, thank you, because that actually was part of the discussion.
I thought you were going to bring that up tonight.
Yeah. That was, that was, that was part of the discussion that we had as a team that said, you know, while we're in the risk of coming back again, let's just, let's go to A and make adjustments as, as we need to. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. So, that's, I am very, I'm, I'm happy that we're making this step, and I think, is, is Mr., Dr. Barnes speaking later?
He's right behind you.
Yeah. I think that, Dr. Barnes, I asked you a question last week that was about test scores and how, what was one of the first things we needed to do to make things better, and I believe he said get as many kids back in the classrooms as possible. I think it was something to that effect. This was one of the first steps in this process of, of improving academic outcomes for students. I want, what I'm trying to do is just convey to the public that we're not just making decisions because the state governor and the Senate told us to, we're making decisions because evaluating what we have ourselves, it was the right, it's the right time to make this decision as well. So, as, as far as academic numbers, that, do you see this move to putting more kids in the classrooms as a way to help with academic, the, the learning loss issues that we're seeing?
I think what we've seen across the board is some students have thrived in a remote learning experience. There's some students who have been remote and have not gotten all that they could have in in-person learning. We want to safely maximize our in-person, our students' access to in-person instruction to the best of our ability. So, I think the presentation that we're putting forth is, how can we max, safely maximize the number of students who are getting as frequent access to in-person instruction as possible? And I think that will be the benefit to our community and to most of our students, but I do not want to discount that some of our students have thrived remotely, and we want them to continue to, but some of our students just haven't had as robust an educational experience, either in hybrid or remote.
I agree with that, and I have college students that I know that are thriving online and some that are not doing well at all, all in my own family. What I want to convey as well is, that was mentioned earlier, is that we have asked a tremendous amount to one particular group. Now, all of our staff has been just phenomenal in stepping up since last March the 13th and a little bit before then because we saw things coming. Everybody has really stepped it up, but our principals have been asked to do some incredible work, and, and, and they are facing this head-on. They are, they are really just doing yeoman's work, so I want to, I want to congratulate all of them. I want to thank them for the spirit and the heart that they have of, and, and just the, the willingness to remain flexible and fluid, knowing that we may be coming at them three days later with something new. So, I do want to recognize that. So, Ms. Peugeot, I know we had some special leave provisions, and I believe some of that might be about to expire, and I didn't know what some of the, that kind of stuff, how that would impact the available staff we have to accommodate potential increases in the number of students in our schools and on buses.
Absolutely. So, the, the current provisions under the FFCRA that this board voted to extend.
I couldn't remember all the initials for it. I was going to call it FERPA, but that is totally not it.
So, this board, as you'll recall, had voted to extend the employees' ability to use that leave through March 31st, so that will, in fact, expire on March 31st, and communications are underway to staff to keep them notified regarding, you know, what happens next and if they still need additional options. In terms of our staffing metrics, I heard a lot of questions, of course, and rightfully so, around transportation, and I had mentioned that our metrics dashboard shows that we're all in green, not only instructional, but also with our operational staffing metrics, custodial, drivers, and food service. It's important to note, however, with the transportation, I know there were a lot of questions, and really the biggest variable is this, you know, how many students may transition from FRA to in-person? I mean, I could, I would be remiss if I did not state that if we had a mass transfer from FRA into in-person and all of those students needed transportation, yes, we would have a bus driver staffing issue because we are in green on that metrics dashboard because it's based on current ridership. So, I do want to make sure that we're fully transparent with that, but the, the, the bright side to that is that we are continuing to actively monitor this on a weekly basis, and that district review is not going to go away. We're going to continue to monitor that up through the last day that we have students in, in school and then starting again in the fall. So, in, in terms of those staffing metrics as well, we have seen people now come off of those leaves that had been made available to them, just simply because they've exhausted what's been available or they no longer need it. I mean, we know that a lot of people were using the childcare provision under the, the FFCRA, which expanded the Family Medical Leave Act to allow for that option, but as, as more students have been returning to the classroom, it goes without saying that that need has somewhat lessened. So, we do feel like it's a balancing act. We understand that our employees, many of them still have situations and they still have needs, and we're going to do our best to accommodate them in that vein with the options that we have available to them.
Speaking of accommodations, I know back in the earlier days, we heard a lot of people talking about needing to be home to take care of elderly family members, not wanting to expose them. I know that the vaccine prevalence, especially in the over 65 population, is growing daily, and, and that is protecting that population greatly. Are we seeing any change or are, is there anything to be expected in changing accommodations, or should a principal say, I no longer, I, I, I need this person back in the building? I mean, how is that being handled and is there, I know you guys have to be stretched, you, and, and I commend HR for what they've done this year. It's been under constantly changing circumstances and constantly changing funding streams and all of those different things and regulations. I commend you. Are we reviewing, are we backlogged on trying to review the, the balance of needs between accommodations and principals' changing needs in the classroom?
So, first of all, thank you for those kind words. Staff certainly would appreciate that. We had stood up a process, we stood up a process last fall to be able to adequately, adequately address. adequately address employees' needs on an individual basis. So it involves an accommodation process that is run by HR in collaboration with the principals and any employee who needs a particular accommodation. I do want to clarify, however, I want to make sure that there's not, that, that some of your comments may not have implied that we were able to accommodate people who had family members that were high-risk. We were only able, based on our current staffing needs and the, the need to be able to support in-person students, to extend accommodations to teachers who, because of their own reasons, were high-risk for serious illness if they were to contract the virus. So there have, we have a process in place by which, if a certain school, based on particular needs of students at that school, need a teacher to come back in, then we sit down and we have a discussion. It's HR, the principal, and that employee to go over what those options are. And then we, we, in many instances, have had to recall staff back into the classroom. In some instances, that means we've recalled them in a hybrid model, where they come in when they are needed, and then if they are not needed because they are teaching students who are remote, then they teach students who are remote. So we are going to continue in that vein up until the end of the school year, because we've made that commitment to our employees to accommodate to the extent that we can. But the key words are "to the extent that we can."
Yes.
So we, you know, I, I'm sure that in many instances, teachers may expect that phone call that says, we need to talk about this, based upon the needs of students who are enrolled at that school. Perhaps someone who is out on a special accommodation might be the only teacher who teaches a certain subject area, and there aren't any other ways to cover that. So in those situations, we will try to work out the best plan that we can, that can help everyone, making sure that we're supporting the needs of students, but also balancing the needs of staff. Because while we know our mission is to support and grow students, we can't do that without our valued staff members. So, so we really do try to handle that careful balancing act as best we can.
What you just said is crystallizes every decision that I've had to make for the last year. Balancing the needs of students while still maintaining everything else that falls underneath that, and, and the staff is part of that. Because we do want our students to have effective teachers that, that have planning period, and they have things, time to get things organized, and, and just the burden that they're carrying right now. So that, that's just, I'm so glad that you brought that up. It's just, you know, everyone's like, you need to just do what's best for kids. Well, what's best for kids, plus, we have to balance all the other things that come behind that to support those kids. So it's so important for that. But I just want to thank you. I want to thank, I, all of our staff has been phenomenal. Balancing is something we all, I think we're all on the tight wire right now, the, the pandemic tightrope. And, and every day, a, a strong breeze comes from the other direction to try to blow us down, and, and we've just all managed to stay there, and I thank you for that. That's all the questions I have for now. I'll, obviously, will be supporting this recommendation.
Mr. Strain, before I go back to Dr. Jones, do you have any questions?
Sure.
At this point?
Is everybody else at an opportunity? So, if I understand the proposal correctly here, we, we go to Plan A, as the state board has defined, a minimum of four, four days a week for everyone on April 12th, and then move on May 10th to five days a week. So if I, if I go through the chronology here, I can remember the state leaders going forward on February 2nd, pleading with us to return at five days a week. And then a month later, about five weeks later, they came together, did another press conference, and then quickly, a bill with unanimous support for a requirement to go into Plan A for elementary school, which we've done this week, and then Plan A or B in the middle and high school. So our, our response to these things, and, and of course, the grades out of the first semester, and, and full recognition, as we've always said in this room with this group, that the overwhelming majority of students are best served in our classrooms. Our, our response has been, actually, on the 22nd of March, to go four days a week for elementary school and K-8, 12th of April to go four days a week for middle school and high school, and the 10th of May for five days a week for all of our students, who choose to do so. Now, Mr. Superintendent, you said earlier, this is really focused on what's in the best interest of the overwhelming majority of our students. And to Ms. Cheek's point, that's a, that's a balanced view. I mean, we've, we've got to keep that front and center, I often say, at the beginning and end of our conversations, but make sure that in the middle, we make sure that we're taking care of our staff. So I think we have found that right balance. But, but I still struggle, because if it's, if it's in the best interest of students to return five days a week, Mr. Superintendent, on the 10th of May, how does it not follow that it's in the best interest of students to return five days a week as soon as possible? We could say the 12th of April, five days a week. We're already four days a week for, for our elementary schools. And so, what I'm trying to reason here is if it's the right thing to do on the 10th of May, how is it the right and best thing to wait until the 10th of May and not go ahead and implement this on the 12th of April?
Mr. Strain, I certainly appreciate your question, and I will say that I think we all want the same thing. We want to bring as many kids back for in-person instruction as quickly as we possibly can, and as we've said, in a manner that is as safe as possible. And so, I, I couldn't agree with you more when Ms. Cheek said that when thinking about what's best for kids, you also have to balance the needs of our staff members and our teachers, who have poured so much, you know, into whatever modality our students have learned in over the, over the past year. And so, you know, we believe that the plan that we have put forth as a recommendation for board consideration, that that plan, moving April 12th to four days in-person for middle and high school students, and then mid-May, or just about mid-May, moving students to five days a week, we believe that is the best plan, and that's our best thinking. But I certainly do understand where you're coming from. But I, I'm just here to present what our best thinking is, and what we believe is, is best for kids.
You just touched on it, that this is what's best for kids. If it's best for kids on the 10th of May, how's it not best for kids on the 12th of April? I mean, that's, that's where I'm really struggling, right? We all know. I mean, you and I, and we all discuss routinely, we need as many folks back in the classrooms as possible, as early as possible. And we have before us a tremendous opportunity to do so on the 12th of April. But we're being presented a plan that doesn't do it on the 12th of April, it does it on the 10th of May. And I'd like to understand how that justification is, in fact, in the best interest of students to delay it yet another month? I, I don't understand that.
You know, certainly-
Can you walk me through the logic?
Certainly, one could surmise that this is a cautious, a more cautious approach. And I wouldn't disagree with that. Certainly, we don't want to go from zero to 100 all at once, and this gives us an opportunity. I think certainly, in a month's time, we will know more about the implementation. If, if this recommendation is approved, we will know more than we do, than we currently do, and certainly on April the 12th, to have brought more kids back in on a more frequent basis. So, for those reasons, I believe it's the best plan.
None of that, with respect, none of that logic fits with what's, you know, the, the clear need of students, the best interest of students. I understand caution. I've understood caution since last July, when we were having this conversation. I get it. We're prepared. You've said for a long time, we're ready, let's go. Here's an opportunity. Clearly, you guys haven't brought this forward. It, it's, it's a disappointment to me that we're not leaning into this. We're doing what, frankly, what we were ordered to do. And, and that's where we are. So, thanks.
If I could just share one other thing, and certainly, we don't bring recommendations in isolation. We certainly get the best thinking of our principals, our learning communities, superintendents, and others in the district. And so, this is a well-thought-out plan. It's not something that we came up with overnight. And, and, you know, I, I respect your opinion, but I think on this particular issue, we, we don't see eye to eye, and we're going to choose to respectfully disagree.
So, so are you saying that this is the best we can do for students?
This is our best thinking based upon all of the collaboration that we've gotten from our principals, our learning communities, superintendents, those who supervise principals directly. And based upon that, I am bringing this recommendation to the board for consideration.
Yes, I'll support this because it's, it's, it's a step forward.
Sure.
It's, it's not the best we could do for our students, and we continue to fall short of that position. Thank you.
Dr. Jones?
Perhaps this is a good segue. Ms. Pejo, I'm going to be asking you questions. But what I heard-
Is your mic on? I just wanted to make sure your-
What I heard from you, Superintendent Winston, is that it's taken a lot of planning to get our students back in school safely, and under the conditions that are ever-changing. I think staff and everyone is working hard, and I appreciate that. Ms. Pejo, you mentioned, though, about subs and having a dedicated list of subs. Am I correct in hearing that?
Well, we have, we maintain a pool of substitutes in CMS so that we can staff schools that are not, that are not under contract with Kelly Services to provide those subs. So roughly about half our schools CMS provides the subs for. So what we're, we're, what we've done is we've opened up that sub pool to be able to take jobs across all schools at our district, and we have, we've provided an opportunity for Title I schools to advertise up to four additional daily positions every day, if they need it, to be able to either cover for other substitute positions that were not, teacher vacancies that were not filled, or for other needs that the school might have.
And that was my concern, because pre-COVID, when everything was sunny and bright, it was difficult for some of our Title I schools to get subs. That dedicated Kelly service, the subs pretty much determine, oh, yes, I will come today, but they aren't coming to Title I schools. So, I hope we are taking in consideration those dedicated staff people that will not be highly selective in going to some of, to schools that, they aren't so highly selective that they will choose not to go to Title I schools.
Understood. And, and, and I, I think it's worth noting that we have not only committed to looking at what we can do in response to this pandemic, but also going forward, how we can, because certainly, the pandemic has shed even a bigger spotlight on the area of substitute management, and what we can do going forward to make sure that we enhance the ability of all schools to attract and retain good substitutes.
I appreciate that, because that's highly needed.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Cheek, and then Ms. Marshall.
I want to know, when we have the number of students that have moved out of the full remote into in-person before we start these changes, where will we be? Because I don't want the principals, and they've made a plan, and then they have to look at it again. Are, are we going to have what we need to know so that we can do what is best to balance? And, and as I think about all the changes that teachers have already made, principals are making, will we wind up with the, and I'm talking about in the building now, in the, at the school ground level, will they be having to change again when they get those numbers?
So, there, there, we can't say with 100% what changes will have to take place, but what, what I do want to restate is, although the Senate Bill 220 gives our families to the 1st of April to make those changes, what we know is our next week is, is when our students and, and many of our staff are on spring break. We're requesting that by the end of this week, on the 26th, by the close of business on the 26th, that they have gone in and made that change, if they choose to make a change. If everyone's happy with your current modality of learning, you don't have to do a thing. You stay the same, and it's fine. But that, we are encouraging our families that do want to make a change to go ahead and make sure that that is done by the 26th. So on the 29th, on that Monday, we're able to really clean those numbers up, and then our principals are able to, for the remainder of that week, be able to really make sure that they're ready to receive those students on the 12th of April, when we return back from spring break, and also on the first day. The only request I'll have to our families is patience and grace. Patience and grace to our schools. Give them a little bit of flexibility, work with them a little bit, and that is part of that, right? Is being out there, making sure that they go, make sure that, you know, I understand you might not make, want to make that decision right on the 26th. We encourage you to make it before the 26th. That way, we can get those accurate numbers. They can run the schedules, they can run the things that they need to do in the schoolhouse to make sure that they're ready to receive a, a larger number of students in either in, in remote, or full remote, or rather, in-person, either way. So, thank you.
And the final question, do you see a lot of changes? I know this may have been brought up before. In middle school and high school, it may look a little different, but in terms of teacher changes, students having class changes in terms of their schedules, I mean, what will that look like? Because I think that's very important right now, at this time of the school year, where we're preparing actually for end-of-course, end-of-grade assessments. This is a critical time of the school year. So change is important, that this change and the structure is going to impact how they continue to learn and get ready for the end of the year.
Yes, ma'am. I'll, I'll put myself back in that seat that I sat in for several years.
Right.
And will tell you that the one thing that I want to do is, is one, make sure that our students have the best opportunity to be successful and to learn. Second is to make sure I honor that relationship that a teacher and a student has built up to this point in time, in the, in, in their class time together. So to minimize that the best I can, I would make any adjustments I needed to make in which to honor that. But there are those times when we know that that can't be honored, and there may have to be a change. So I would never state that with a 100%, but I know that all of our principals feel the same way I do. They do not want to sever that relationship. They want our students to have the opportunity to continue with the same teacher. It's just, it's not 100% guaranteed, but that is, that's the way they think, and, and we're so appreciative of them, because that's how they've stayed in that, in that mode of thinking over the last course of the year. And it's definitely through the course of this calendar year, and just appreciate them for doing that.
Yes. And I, and I want to thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
The work that the teachers and the principals are doing to ensure this is so critically important, and especially, and I don't know if people know this, this time of the year, which is going into fourth quarter, where the most important thing now is preparing students to be successful by the end of the school year.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before I go to you, Ms. Fowler, I, I feel a need to reiterate something again. With, with the new law, SB 220, combined with the new guidance from the state board about the full remote academy, the, the letter of the law that we have to comply with is we have 61,000 students in full remote academy who have the option to come back to in-person. And then all of the students that are in-person have the option to switch to full remote academy. And by law, that has to be done by April 1st? I mean, we have to, they, the parents have until April 1st to let us know, and then we're supposed to flip a switch and make it happen the first instructional day after April 1st? Luckily for us, that's, well, that's spring break. I don't, I, I, I mean, I know our principals need a little bit of a break, but I, I just want parents to understand sort of the back of, back of, behind-the-scenes work that it takes to incorporate all that change. And who knows? Maybe everyone in full remote academy will stay there, and maybe everyone in in-person will stay there, or maybe everyone will swap, or maybe all, maybe you'll have 40,000 full remote kids come back into in-person, and the principals are going to have to figure out what classes they go into. So I'm sure that there will be, I mean, by default, by, by necessity, there, there probably are going to be some class changes. But I, I'm sure that the principals are going to do everything they can to avoid that. But the logistics are mind-boggling, and I'm just, you know, hats off to our principals for doing it again.
Ms. Fowler?
This is Brianna Fowler speaking, and I just have a question. I know that we were talking about April 12th being the first day that the students would be returning back to in-person learning on this anticipated proposal. However, are we going to, what is our plan to negate the fact that there may be a surge of COVID cases due to traveling that may happen during the spring break? Although- Although that the CDC says to not travel during spring break, many people are traveling due to staying inside, or just the COVID cases may rise due to spring break? So my question is, what are we going to do to alleviate some of that?
What, oh, well, I'll start off by saying vaccinations, wear a mask, social distancing, and think smart.
Thank you, that's such an important question. And again, it's important that we continue to monitor the metrics on a weekly basis, and that the superintendent actually does have the authority when necessary to be able to transition subsets of students to a remote learning environment. In, in the event there's a situation where there is a high number of COVID cases, or quarantines are such, that it's impacting, for example, an entire class or a grade level. So that is something that this board granted the superintendent the authority to do, and we've had instances of, of situations where we've gone into remote for those reasons, and we have started to denote those on our metrics dashboard that we share weekly as well. So that is, that is our process that we have in place to address that, the very thing that you mentioned in your question.
Thank you, and is there a way that we can tell families or our students to please be mindful during spring break to stay home, if you, especially if you would like to return in person? To stay home, social distance, wear a mask, because like we've seen in Miami and the Florida state having to close down, it's very important that you stay safe, especially now that we're moving into Plan A through this proposal. So I just wanted to make an emphasis on that remark, but everything else sounds phenomenal. Thank you.
I think that you could say it even better than how you just articulated it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I will second that, Ms. Fowler. I will, I will ask parents to, and, and families to stay home for spring break. I mean, a lot of us stayed home for Thanksgiving, a lot of us stayed home for Christmas. I know it's a sacrifice, and it's getting so old. I recently got vaccinated, and I had such a strong impulse to buy a plane ticket and go visit my mom and dad, who I haven't seen for 14 months, but I'm, it, it, it's just not time, it's not time yet for spring break, and we have so much to lose if we have another surge. So I, I, I will totally back you up on that, and I know Gibby Harris, the Mecklenburg County Health Director, has been issuing that same plea. Oh, Ms., actually, Ms. Cheek, and then Ms. Marshall.
So I was going to suggest you put that on your IG, like, your Instagram, Ms. Fowler, because you have a great voice, but I would also say, Dr. Hayes, could we make sure that our staff, school-facing staff gets that message out? That's a great connected message. So we're going to put a list of things on parents, because our teachers and our principals have lists of things on them, so they're going to have to make sure they do the survey and let us know what their choice is to come back and ride the bus. We also need to then say, and we hope that during that spring break period, you will make good choices, and that those choices include social distancing, wear your mask, and try to stay home only with people that you are safe with. Now, the CDC has said, if you are with close family members and they have been vaccinated, you can be with them. I'm hugging my mom again, and it is a blessed event, because we're both fully vaccinated. And the first time I felt good about hugging her was a, just, it was a great day. And so, and that's what I would also continue to urge our staff and any of our, our community that is eligible now. I think we're starting Phase Four now, Group Four, and, and I just got a couple notices this evening that more shots have been made available, and more locations are now available, so we need to get that done. So, Dr. Hayes, one thing keeps being brought up, and, and I, I talked about it when Ms. Pujol mentioned, that we want to do what's best for kids with the Balancing Act. If we had a magic wand and we could say, what is the best thing, we put kids, wouldn't you agree that we would put kids back in five days a week, if all things were equal and there were no constraints on any of those other items?
I would say yes, except for those that have found the remote actually works for them.
Yep, and I know-
And have a new opportunity to, to take courses maybe a different way than they thought they would in, in the future. There's a lot of opportunities for our high school students in that realm, but I would say yes, if we could, if we could wave a magic wand, back everything up about 13 months from now, from where we are right now, I think we all would have, would have done that and, and maintained. But I do want to also say that we've, we've learned a lot during this time around what's the right thing to do.
Well, and I, that's what, that was the next thing, is it's, it's not, that is the key of what everything we do, but all those other things have to fall into place to, to gerder and uphold what's best for kids. I mean, I sat in, at the dais last March 13th and was told that the blood of kids would be on our hands, because I wasn't going to shut down schools that day. I heard those words.
March 13th of last year.
March 13th of last year, I heard those words. And I've never forgotten those words, because that hurt me as a healthcare provider for 30-plus years. So here we are, a year later, we have to do what's best for kids, but there are so many constraints, and I, former colleague Mike Rabel that used to work here, used to talk a lot about the theory of constraints, and that's all the other factors that factor into the one decision. It's not just about, we know what's academically best for the vast majority of kids, we have to also make sure that we have staffing, we have the safety measures, because we need to make sure that kids are coming back as safely as possible. So I just want to reiterate that to our families right now, please make those choices next week, let us know as soon as possible. The sooner you fill out those forms, the more time your principals are going to have to make their best decisions. Please use, and not just our families, but our staff, please make good choices during that spring break period, to keep yourself safe, make sure you have signed up for your vaccine. Heck, if you get the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine in the next week, you're going to be fully vaccinated by the time April 12th gets here. So make good choices, get your vaccine, and, and we're going to keep doing, I feel like as a board and as a district, doing what we can that's best for kids within the constraints that we're operating under a global pandemic, and that will be it for me.
Thank you, and I'd just like to also say, as you did, you're encouraging our families. I have two young ladies at home that every morning, as they go-
Yes.
-I will be saying to them, social distance, keep your mask on, be smart. So I think that's, we would, we would ask all of our community to have that same conversation with their children every single morning before saying goodbye to them to head out to school.
And with their grownups.
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
Ms. Marshall?
I want to talk just a little bit about a subject we have not mentioned yet, and that is year-end testing. And, and this sort of weaves into, you know, how we are beginning to come to the end of the year. And I know, I know Dr. Barnes is here, and one of the things we're going to be doing tonight is, is changing the schedule so that we are in-person five days beginning May 12th. And I want folks to know that, 10, thank you, sorry. I want folks to know that, you know, we've gone through several iterations of, of what we feel about testing, but what we feel and what we want in CMS is not our decision to make around testing. The federal government has not given any school district in this country a waiver on year-end testing. Am I correct about that?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the state government, in turn, has not either. And we know that we are going to have some unfinished learning, and we have got work to do, but we're going to look at this testing to figure out exactly, laser-like, where we need to begin and what we need to do. So to Mr. Strange's point, I would love to have students in five days a week, but our secondary teachers, our middle school teachers and our high school teachers are all, pretty much, all of them are teaching the students in front of them, and then the students in Full Remote Academy. Parents, I think, continue to ask me this, we do not have two staffs. We do not have a Full Remote Academy staff and an in-person staff. And so, so every teacher out there is doing, is, is doing this juggling act, trying to pull this together. The majority of their time will now be spent in, in-person, but giving them a few hours to deal with everyone who's at home in one modality, and teach for a few hours, frankly, without their mask on, is probably what's going to help our teachers survive this last little bit, and in turn, that's, that's great for kids. So, so I'm, I'm not, you know, while, again, if we didn't have any of these other constraints, it'd be a no-brainer to have kids in five days a week. But then, starting in May, we're going to have to administer federally mandated tests. And, and that, again, is not our decision to make, and we, and we have to do this. So, so I know that on, on May 10th, we'll be all back in, in, in a five-day mode. What, what can parents and families anticipate during that time of, of the year for us, in terms of what that testing schedule's going to look like?
Yes, ma'am, and as you've articulated well, there, we have not been given any waivers for testing requirements that are federally required. So starting on the 12th, the General Assembly has articulated that for year-long courses, we have 10 days to administer all required end-of-grade or end-of-course exams. For semester-long courses, we have five days to administer them. What families should expect is our regular schedule that we would have during that period, starting on May 12th, which would be that first Wednesday, that usually would have been that asynchronous day, where the specific assessment that is scheduled at that particular school to be administered will be administered in that morning, starting, if it's a high school, in the last five days, they would then have a half-day and an early release for the high school on the last five days of our class. But otherwise, it should be just like we have during every testing period. I think one thing you said in particular that's important for our listening audience and for us to reconcile, and I think to Ms. Delahara, something that you said, is that we have currently, this can change, approximately 61,000 students who are in Full Remote Academy. And we have teachers, as you articulated, Ms. Marshall, who are teaching those in front of them and those who are watching on camera. 61,000 would make us either the fourth or fifth largest district in the state of North Carolina.
Right.
Although we want to well-serve every student in-person in front of us, we don't want to diminish the education we provide those who either have thrived remotely, or who choose to be remote for their own personal, public health, or value reasons. Giving that day allows teachers to connect with those families, to plan so they can teach in-person and remotely simultaneously often-
Thank you.
-and be able to then connect their colleagues to make sure that the lessons are rich and vibrant for those who are both in front of them and those who are, who are watching them on screen. We're only stepping away from that so that we can facilitate the administration of these federally required exams. And, and so that is why during the week of the 10th, beginning on the 12th, what parents should experience, expect, and experience is just our regular testing regimen. Once the testing is over, we get back to the, the business as usual. There are certain constraints around what can be taught once testing starts, but just as we would every other day. Dr. Hayes, would you like to add anything?
Thank you for that. I, I do want to also reiterate, and we're going to talk more about this later, not, I don't, maybe even, I don't know when exactly, but it's going to be soon, there will be a Full Remote Academy next year, but it will not be tied into each school. So we're going to speak more about that later, but what that's going to do for parents, that's the game changer, because then teachers will not be teaching, next year, they will not be teaching students in front of them and in Full Remote Academy simultaneously. So we will be back to a five-day-a-week, non-hybrid situation, just like before. I get questions about this, and I just want to make sure people understand that that, that's the game changer. People will have opportunities, but you will expect, if you are in-person, to have a five-day-a-week experience for all grades. That is correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Delahara.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Dr. Barnes. I don't need you to go back to the podium, but I do want to thank you for mentioning, because you, and actually, Ms. Marshall, sort of made the next points I was going to make, which was connecting what Mr. Winston had said about this is the best thinking that he's bringing forth and explaining also why on Wednesday, why we will have the, the asynchronous day. And if I recall, Dr. Hayes, it was last meeting, two weeks ago, we went into great detail about why that was important. Did you say something about if there was one thing the principals were pounding their fists on the table, asking for, was this, this Wednesday, in part, because we do know that our teachers are working hybrid? And, you know, they're being stretched and pulled, and it allows also in that afternoon piece, after the synchronous part, during the asynchronous part, an opportunity for them to do some extra tutoring, small group instruction, whatever they feel like to meet the needs of the students, knowing that so many of them are in the Full Remote Academy. Is that a fair assessment? Didn't you say something like that, that the principals had really asked for that?
Yes, ma'am, and also I just want to make sure everyone knows that we, in the last board meeting, we also changed that from asynchronous day to a remote day.
Correct.
And what that means is that students are actually receiving direct instruction from the teacher, just in a remote, in a remote modality of learning. So that will maintain, as you see here, as far as the four days per week and remotely one day per week, that will continue as well, utilizing the second part of that day for PLCs, for professional development, all those things that allow them to make sure that they are adequately meeting the needs to provide that strong education for all their students with, in all of their classes, and it definitely does. It pulls all their students under one modality of learning, so they can have a full classroom at that point in time while they're doing that.
Right, and, and, exactly, because of this dual modality issue that we have going on and needing that extra time. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness of that, and to the point that we were making earlier about so many families who were wanting to be in-person but not in Plan A, and the superintendent's suggestion that they will have the choice to go to Full Remote Academy, which is true, we could have people moving into the Full Remote Academy. And so for all the talk of why the students in general perform better in-person, there will be people now who maybe are performing okay with the two days a week, but now they're going to be, need to choose the Full Remote Academy. So theoretically, we have folks that won't do as well, in that sense, if that's our assertion, that kids do better in general in, but now we're telling certain children that they need to go to the Full Remote Academy, because that we only have these two options, there's the one or the other. Are you following me, what I'm saying?
I am, but I also want to just put out there is that at the last board meeting, we did talk about the one R, the one R code, and we modified our remote learning plan to include the one R code. We did ask our families to communicate directly with the school if they choose to use a one R code, and that one R code allows our students that are supposed to be in-person to be able to opt into instruction for that day, after notifying the school, and receive attendance as being present in the classroom. So that was on there as well, so-
This is if they need to, like, say they come back from spring break, and they just want to be in remote. Is that what you're talking about, where they then have the one R code?
They can, they can use the one R, the one R is when they are supposed to be in-person, they are choosing not to be in-person, and they are, but they are attending remotely.
Right, exactly.
And, and it's key here that we make sure that, especially the fact that you have the, us moving to Plan A, and, which may reduce the number of remote days that a school would have, they have to be in communication with their schools, because that could require them to potentially have a different teacher other than the one that they would have in-person, because they may have a dedicated teacher, as Ms. Marshall was talking about as well, they may have a dedicated teacher that's teaching the remote students. So communication with the schoolhouse is critical in those decisions, if, if a family makes those, but that is a, that is an option that's there, that's in between the two options that are in front of us this evening as well.
And the communication has come already from the principals to, to the families, or was it a central office-led to explain this one R option? Has that already gone out?
Yes, ma'am, so we, we approved it.
Right, last two weeks.
It had to go into, it had to go into a remote plan, that has, that has been taken care of, it's already been received by the state. We have our alignment team meeting tomorrow morning, several of our schools have already started to operationalize that. We have our alignment team meeting tomorrow with our learning community superintendents to get real tight around that language, and they will be sending that information out to all the schools, just to make sure it's very clear-cut, especially around some of the, the new choices and options that are out there at this point in time, and how that is actually reflected in Plan A, rather than the Plan B that we were in before. So we need to make those adjustments to the language, and we'll have that out, no later than tomorrow, Thursday.
And I would really love to see it come to the board as well, I mean, maybe that was already part of the plan, but, I mean, certainly, we want to encourage families to communicate directly with the schoolhouse, as we call it, you know, with the principal or administration, but because oftentimes, families are writing us and they're confused, I'd like to have the correct information, I certainly don't want to mislead folks, but that might take the pressure off if they're writing me anyway and they're confused, if I can get a copy of that, so we can articulate it well, just to help make sure we're pushing out the right information, I'd love to get a copy of that.
Yes, ma'am, be more than happy to share that, no problem at all.
Okay, and just sort of my last comment that I'll make, or, or ask you to comment, I, I just wanted to express, I mean, certainly, I appreciate the comments that were made by Ms. Fowler and, and seconded by our chair, as far as the, you know, our encouragement to families to be safe, and, you know, we know we can't control that, though. What we can control, or I hope to a certain degree we can control, is the, the environment, you know, at our schools, and the adherence and the seriousness with which- at our schools and the adherence and the seriousness with which we take this. I have still been disappointed to see photographs posted on school sites, you know, celebrations of, you know, different events with maskless, you know, students and others. And so, I mean, what else can we do to reiterate the importance of this? And are there consequences for folks that... Because it's one thing to just do it, but what happens is, and even if they're just taking their mask down for a quick second, taking a picture and putting it out, it sends this sense of, oh, well, let's just all chill out about it. You know, I'm just afraid of this sort of, I don't know, I don't know the right words for it, but it just sort of communicates the sense of, let's just all relax about it. It's no big deal. Oh, well, if everyone seems to be okay with it. Anyone who's not, it's overreacting. I'm just worried about that sort of trickle-down effect. And would just like to reiterate that I think we need to stand strong, and would love to hear you speak to that or the superintendent, because I've just seen incidences where folks aren't.
No, I certainly appreciate that, because I think, in general, and I'm not just CMS-specific, but what I've noticed or observed is this belief that we're out of the woods, right, as a country. But we know we are not there yet. And so, every opportunity that we get, we want to encourage our students, our staff, members of our community to remain vigilant and take all of the necessary safety protocols that we have been espousing over a period of time. And I think part of that goes back to something that we shared earlier, is that, you know, so often, the community does ask, "How can we help?" Or families ask, "How can we help?" Well, one of the best things you can do is have a conversation with your young person, with your student, to make sure that they understand the importance of following the safety protocols. It's one thing if this recommendation is approved. It's one thing to bring kids back more frequently, but it's another thing to keep them there. And we won't be able to keep them there if we have individuals who are not vigilant in following the safety protocols.
Thank you.
Okay. I just have two quick questions, and then I'm going to turn to Ms. Byers-Bailey for the motion. So, the first, actually, first was just a comment. I had, I heard about bus drivers are getting a refresh on the training with attestations. I just want to point out from bus drivers that I've been talking to, that the parents might need a refresher on the importance of attestations. And there are some parents that just aren't doing it, so we may need to do a reminder on that, too. Now, I just want to understand, Dr. Hayes, if, I'm going, well, so, if this, if we did not do Plan A as recommended, if we stayed with Plan B, not knowing how many full remote academy students are going to switch over and expecting all the 504 and the IEP kids to come in, how would we accomplish Plan B? Would we have to go back to one week on, two weeks off? Would we have to go to some new four, group of four cohorts? I just want people to understand what the alternative is.
No, thank you. And that was part of our conversation as well that we had with Cabinet and then also with the Equity and Learning Community Superintendents. And that's a great point, was we were just calculating even, what does it look like if 20,000 kids come back? What if 40,000 students come back? Well, we were able to quickly realize that that would move us not only backwards from where we've come, putting us in rotations of week rotations to be able to accommodate Plan B. We had three. It could possibly move us to four or five rotations. So, therefore, potentially having our students only be inside the school building, maybe one, maximum two weeks for the remainder of the school year. And we were not comfortable with that. And that pushed us directly to, as we stated earlier, the recommendation of A.
Okay. Thank you. And that just does not feel tenable to me.
Exactly.
Ms. Byers-Bailey?
Yes.
Will you read the motion?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move to modify the return-to-in-person instruction plan approved by this board on March 9, 2021. My motion includes the following: the adoption of two new school calendars attached to this motion entitled, 2020, 2021, pre-K and EC partial cohort academic calendar as of 4/1/21. 2020, 2021 revised academic calendar as of 4/1/21. Beginning April 12, 2021, all students in grades 6 through 12 who are not enrolled in full remote academy will return to the state's Plan A for in-person instruction and will attend school in-person four days per week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and remotely one day per week, Wednesday. Number three, students in grades K-5 who are not enrolled in the full remote academy will continue to receive Plan A in-person instructions four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and remotely one day per week, Wednesday. Pre-K students and EC students whose IEP teams have determined that in-person instruction is needed will continue to attend school in-person five days per week. Beginning May 10, 2021, and through the end of the school year, all students who are not enrolled in the full remote academy will attend school in-person five days per week. Families have until April 1, 2021 to enroll in the full remote academy as an alternative to Plan A in-person instruction. Families have until April 1, 2021 to opt in to Plan A in-person instruction from the full remote academy. Student changes either into or out of the full remote academy are effective April 12, 2021. The superintendent shall have the authority to transition individual schools, classrooms, or parts of an individual school building from in-person instruction to remote instruction, only when necessary due to COVID-19 exposures that result in insufficient school personnel or required student quarantines. The superintendent must report any shift from in-person to remote instruction to the Department of Public Instruction within 72 hours of the shift. This plan will adhere to the guidelines of the remote learning plan previously approved by this board on July 15, 2020, and modified as its March 9, 2021, meeting.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion from Ms. Byers-Bailey, a second from Ms. Cheek. We've spent a good amount of time asking questions, but do we have any further debate or discussion before we move to a vote? Ms. Sawyer.
Thank you, Carol Sawyer, here. I just want to acknowledge that while the state guidance is different from the guidance of the CDC, and for those who have extorted us to follow the science, I just want to point out that if we were to follow the science as prescribed by the CDC, we would not be making this, we would not be following this recommendation. The directives from the state don't give us much option on this, and I would be, I would not even consider this possibility but for the fact that our teachers and staff have had the opportunity, and I hope have taken that opportunity, to be vaccinated. And so, I feel that while this isn't ideal, because I think we will potentially have large numbers of students congregating, and that may cause some challenges, because we frankly don't have any good options on this, I will support this, but really remind our families that it's up to them to help us keep the schools open for in-person learning. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Fowler.
Hi, this is Brianna Fowler speaking. I just want to make a quick comment as a clarification that Wednesdays are not an asynchronous day. However, is a remote learning day, a full remote learning day. Therefore, there is instruction being happening, and it's not just, the students are given work without any instruction. Like we said earlier, this gives a teacher the opportunity to talk to all students at once in the classroom and to not have to go from a hybrid sense of learning. I just wanted to make that clear. So then, our parents and our families do not think that Wednesdays are just a free day. Thank you.
Ms. Marshall?
Just real quick. Last, on the 9th, two weeks ago, we had a long meeting. Most people know that. We were walking out to the car. I happened to pick up my phone, looked at my Twitter feed, and I see that the governor and the Senate pro tem were going to make an announcement the next day. So, that would be the fourth time that we had made painstaking plans and long meetings, and then everything changed, as Ms. Daschew had said. So, I just feel like we can't stress that enough, that we're trying to be as consistent as we can, but everything's changing. I mean, everything has changed within the last 24 hours in terms of guidance. So, it's a lot to wrap your head around. But I think it's changes that schools are going to have to make, but everybody here has talked about changes that families are really going to have to double down on, so we can open and stay open. And I just appreciate all our, the work that's gone into this and the work that will go into this going forward. Thank you.
Okay. No further debate? Then I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by a show of hands. Any opposed?
One.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, that passes by a vote of eight to one. All right. Let's move on to our next action item, which is recommending approval of an increase in the number of ASAP locations. Before the board acts, I'm going to turn to the superintendent to introduce this item and to make a recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I introduce our chief academic officer...
Brian Kingsley. I'm sorry. Ernest Winston. I have not done it all night. I apologize. I do want to just be really clear about the 1R code. Just wanted to provide some clarity there. It should not be leveraged for convenience. It's, we're asking families to make a choice and then stick with that choice. And so, I know we've had a lot of discussion about it, but I just want to make sure that that's clear. With that, I'm going to turn to Mr. Kingsley. He and his team have worked hard to develop a plan that will open more of our before-school and after-school programs known as BSEP and ASAP. And so, several weeks ago, a very difficult decision was made based on underutilization of these programs this school year to close many of our ASAP and BSEP programs. And so, I am excited about the recommendation that will be brought forth momentarily. Mr. Kingsley.
Mr. Superintendent, thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, good evening. I'm Brian Kingsley. I'm the chief academic officer, here to provide you, as Mr. Winston had shared, an update on our childcare services in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. Just to recap where we left off with the most recent board action on February 19th, it was a very difficult decision that you had to make that evening, which was to temporarily close the majority of our childcare sites effective April 1, which would tentatively keep 25 ASAP sites open. And that decision was made on your behalf based upon enrollment, geography, to ensure programs were open across all areas of our community, as well as community need. As we shared with you, one of the challenges that we grappled with together on that evening was that where we were financially was we were experiencing a monthly deficit just over $800,000. As a result of your board action that evening, that deficit was set to reduce to approximately $205,000 over the months of April and May, which would bring the projected loss of our enterprise fund from December 2020 through June of 2021 to just over $2.1 million. That decision that was incredibly difficult to make had implications not just on children and families across our community. It was 477 students that were set to be displaced from our programs effective April 1, and we have been partnering with those families to try to identify a secondary solution. But as you know, it also had impacts on a reduction in force of approximately 217 of our valued ASAP staff members. That decision also enabled us to have the infrastructure across each of those 25 programs over the course of April and May to support approximately 50 students at each of those programs. These are the 25 programs that you had voted to keep open for the remainder of the year. I would like to give you a lot of credit for making the hard decision to keep programs, maintaining essential services across Mecklenburg County for childcare, as we are the largest childcare provider in Mecklenburg County, while we also know that we had to mitigate as much as possible impact to staff, to students, and families, while making sure that we paid a special emphasis on the most vulnerable members of our community. Things have changed, though, since February 19th, and I am happy, as our superintendent articulated, there's some good news to report here this evening, is that since we have last met, we have had hundreds of students across our 82 currently open sites enroll. Hundreds. Almost over 400 students have enrolled since February 19th. As the need for these particular services, as we've changed modalities of school to be more reliant on in-person learning, the needs for families have changed and increased, as well as having attendance on a more frequent basis. Prior to having elementary school students and K-8 students in our buildings four days a week, families were only taking part of our before-school and after-school services, on average, two days a week, and in some instances, three, if they participated in our full-day services on Wednesday. As a result of those changes, the anticipated deficit has reduced from approximately 205,000 to today, currently, our projection would be that that would now be approximately 139,000. And the projected loss from December through June is now estimated at being around $1.7 million. But it still has implications on over 200 of our staff members, and it's still, without any other action amongst this board, has implications on over 400 of our families today. So, I'm here to provide you a revised recommendation for your consideration, that based upon the new reliance on in-person learning, with the increase in enrollment in over 400 students in our program, and having a more frequent set of revenue coming into our enterprise fund as a result of students coming more frequently, I would like to propose to you that you please keep all 82 currently open ASAP sites for the remainder of the school year, based upon updated enrollment, more frequent student attendance, but with a reduced staff. In some instances, we do have more staff than what we need to support the students that we're serving based upon current enrollment. And so, this recommendation is to ensure that we are at some level reducing staff, but making sure that we're doing so in a manner that is commensurate with the current enrollment. This would bring our monthly deficit up for the last two months of this school year to approximately $416,000, but it would increase the projected loss from December to June just about $200,000 over what you... just about $200,000 over what you voted on, on February 19th, from $2.1 million to $2.3 million. But while this would continue to provide services to all families, no families would be negatively impacted with this particular recommendation, we would also be able to, pending board approval, of course, bring back the majority of our ASEP staff members that are slated to experience reduction in force on April 1, but we will have to experience a RIF for 22 of our site-based staff members. That number would be approximately 45, but we've had approximately 23 staff members have left our organization since February. But that has implications now on 22 staff members between now and the last two months, and we are hopeful, over the course of the summer, as well as in the fall of next year, that, again, we'll continue to bring health back into our childcare services. And I ask you today, this evening, to consider this proposal for your recommendation. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you for this. This is, this is definitely good news, in terms of where we were a month ago. And so you indicated that we've had a, a very robust enrollment of folks that are, since we have announced we're going to come back more frequently, so those folks have enrolled. Are we able to also, I know that we've had, there's been several iterations of funding coming from the federal government. This last funding that I think has been announced, we call it CRESTA III, I believe, are we able to use that funding to help us with this deficit?
Yes, ma'am. We are able to use that round of stimulus funding, as well as we anticipate the next round of the American Rescue Act. It is eligible to be used for these purposes, which will help us tremendously with the anticipated deficit.
I don't believe that that was something we thought we could do a month ago. I think that, from what I had, questions we had asked, that we were, we felt like that that was not a source of funds we could use, but now, now we know that we can, correct?
Yeah, we, at this point in time, we are certain about it, but I do think it's important to note that neither the second round of stimulus dollars or the third round are in the hands of the district.
Correct.
At this particular time, but we, we anticipate being able to access those dollars in the very near future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Schiff.
I just want to say, Lenora Schiff, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to hear this, because I've had a lot of questions about the importance of keeping this after-school and, after-school enrichment program in place, because the deadline of this between April and May was so close. Why not just continue to the end of the year? And I think that made so much sense, and we needed to do that for our families and for our students, and this is, is just a good way to do it. And I want to talk a little bit about, and I don't know if you did, about the possible staff that would be RIFed, and how those 22 site-based, are they there or not, as far as positions? Because I know we talked a little bit about that, so I think it would be helpful to note that this is great, we're able to really keep so many of our staff employed.
Yes, there, there is a lot of great news in this particular proposal, but I would share with you, these are 22 people in positions in our district that would still experience a reduction in force on April 1st. So it is a very difficult time for those employees, pending, obviously, the year approval of this particular proposal, but it does mitigate that number from over 200 down to 22.
Right. And so this says, parents do not have to worry about shifting their kids to other sites, and they would be able to stay where they are.
They get to stay where they are, and I would say enrollment is open. We want to get the message out loud and clear that pending board approval, that these 82 sites stay open, we would want to encourage families to continue to enroll, to breathe health into these particular childcare services. Again, pending approval of the board, of course.
Thank you so much, because this is so, so important and so much needed.
Thank you.
For our families, children.
Mr. Strain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kingsley, I want to build on that point. One of the things that, you know, when we last discussed this at length, and we're faced with a decision, two things were patently clear. Number one, we couldn't afford to continue to run this program at the size we had it. But the second point was, we didn't have kids in schools. Now we do. The tremendous enrollment increase that has occurred since then has largely occurred, at least from, from my perspective that I've seen, on the backs of parents and principals who have been pushing this very hard, in terms of sort of internal marketing, and, and pushing the re-enrollment in the program, as the kids have started going back to school. You know, our elementary school kids are now, this week, four days a week, for the first, first time. And so can you talk a little bit about the campaign that can be run? Because I'm concerned that we have programs with very active parents and principals who are pushing this, and, and that doesn't tend to translate to equality, let alone equity. So how do we go about making sure that we're doing what we need to do to run an aggressive campaign, marketing, promotion, recruitment back into this, that actually brings it back and supports our community and our families, but also makes it solvent again?
Yes, sir. I, I think what you're saying is incredibly important. We need to have, take, we need to be on the offensive, to ensure that we're letting parents know that we're open. I have to be honest with you, I couldn't have projected a month ago that we would have increased enrollment by over 400 students while we were making a difficult decision to temporarily close 70 of our 95 sites. I do think that's an incredible testament to the fortitude of staff and principals, calling families, recruiting families. We need to continue to do more of that. Our program and our infrastructure is built to support almost 8,000 students. We're not there yet. We need to ensure that we get back to breathing health in this system, to ensure that next year, we're not experiencing an annual deficit similar to what we're experiencing this year. So again, pending board approval this evening, what I can assure you is, we will go on an offensive with the communications campaigns, again, to recruit families for, over the next two months of school, to participate in this program, but also in service of next year as well, to make sure that, again, we can restore faith and commitment into this five-star program that we know that our community has learned to depend upon us for.
I appreciate that. I, I think the other piece of this that we often talk about in these discussions is, is the bridge, right? And, and not only recruitment for this year, but for whatever the summer ends up looking like, and into next year, right? And it's going to be absolutely critical that we, we lean hard into this, to recruit families back, to provide these critical services to our communities, to our families. But in doing so, making sure that we are aggressively going out and, and recruiting and saying, hey, we're open for business, come back, come back in, right? So thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
I just would like, can I add just one thing?
Okay, really quick.
And I, it's transportation, as, just kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Strain is saying, one of the issues with after-school enrichment programs with the schools that need it the most is transportation. So in some kind of way, we can work on that, because you know, you have families where they can't pick up the children after school. They can stay, and that's great, right after school, but, and even in summer programs, I think if we can work on how we could see transportation to support these families that really want to be in these programs, and the schools that need it the most, this is why those programs were hard to make, because of transportation. So I think that's a big piece we need to market and work on.
Thank you, Ms. Schiff.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Marshall, would you please read the motion?
Happily. Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's request to make the following changes to the after-school enrichment program, effective April 1, 2021. All 82 after-school enrichment program facilities that have already been open in 2021 will remain open and operational throughout the remainder of the 2020, 2021 academic year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to give that second to Ms. Cheek. Would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Marshall?
Just, just real quick, I think, I think we all are excited about this, just because we've had so many changes in the last month, in terms of, of just information, funding streams, enrollment, but one thing has been constant for me, in terms of hearing from families, is their desire to keep these programs, and how important they are to their families, and then also the value of the employees that, that work with these children day by day. And so, you know, we're all sorry, we've had to, to go down a road that we thought we had to go down, and then we found another path. And so we reacted to that, and I'm, I'm just very happy about the partnership that we have with families. This is a good thing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cheek, and then Ms. Delahara.
We've talked a lot tonight about being nimble and being flexible, and, and this is an example where it's led to something pretty astounding. I think that people whose hearts hit the floor a few, just a few weeks ago, really, I hope will be lifted back up, and a lot of families will be excited by this news, and we can then also prepare for the summer and, and next fall. I would like to commend a couple of my colleagues tonight, because there were two people in this room that would not let this die, and that is my colleague here, Ms. Marshall. Ms. Marshall, the minute this, this, the threat to this program started, I know Mr. Kingsley, you're aware of that, she has not.
Of him.
Stopped, trying to figure out a way to save as much ASEP as possible, and I commend you for your tireless efforts. Mr. Strain, I know you did the same. All my colleagues, I think, we all tried to find a way, but I will tell you, Margaret Marshall, we are going to name the ASEP program after you someday.
I don't think that gets me.
But I do commend my colleagues, because sometimes it does take a lot of work behind the scenes to help, to help encourage people to look for open doors where, where you thought they were closed. And so I do thank staff for being that way, and I thank my colleagues for being flexible. And Mr. Winston, I thank you for encouraging your, your staff to remain open to options in this situation.
Yes.
Well said.
Okay, Ms. Delahara.
Thank you, and Ms. Cheek, you stole a little bit of my thunder, but she can be doubly thanked, because I, I wanted to share the same sentiment. A lot of the same families were writing many of us, and, and I was happy to let Margaret also take the lead on that, and I let them know that Ms. Marshall was all over this, and you did a fantastic job, and I'm sure Mr. Strain did as well. I just didn't have as much direct communication with you about it, but thank you. And then, at some point, I'd like to understand better, not tonight, we still got more to discuss, but how our chief academic officer ends up spending so much time on this particular project, and I know there's a reason why, I just don't understand it, but I know you've done an amazing job of thinking through millions of scenarios, you and your team, I know it's not just you. So thank you for all of your hard work and staff's hard work to be nimble during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Team effort. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, before I call the vote? I will just say, this has been quite the cliffhanger, in a page-turner of a year, and I'm incredibly relieved at the turn, at the reversal of fortunes, and thank everybody who rallied to make that happen. Kind of miraculous, actually. And with that, all those in favor of the motion, please let it be known by a show of hands. Any opposed? Okay. Madam Clerk, that motion passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Winston, did you want to bring back Dr. Hayes?
Yes, Ernest Winston, and I would ask that Dr. Hayes come back to the podium and provide some clarification regarding a previous report.
I just, I've gotten some questions as far as during the presentation, when we start talking about the 1R code. I want to make sure that everyone understands that that is not a, is not a part of the plan, it is not a part of a hybrid plan. We basically need all of our families to understand that there are two options in front of them at this point in time, to be to move into full remote academy, to in-person, from in-person or to remote, or if you do nothing, which is the, another option, you will remain in the current modality of learning that you are in. So we just want to make sure that we were very clear in that. Also, to rein, to restate what the superintendent said, it is not to be used as convenience. It is a code that's used for attendance, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
And Superintendent Winston, there, there was one more message that I think you wanted Ms. Peugeot to bring our ASEP employees.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Ms. Peugeot, I would ask if you could just provide some clarity for employees who were previously notified, our ASEP employees who were previously notified about their status, how will that notification process work?
Absolutely, and thank you for this opportunity to clarify, because I know we probably have several staff who are out there listening to this, and it's incredibly important, because based on the vote previous to tonight, we did already initiate, actually, 238 reduction enforced letters to site-based ASEP staff. So basically, what this means going forward is, as soon as possible, we are going to be notifying approximately 193 employees that they can maintain their current positions. You'll hear me, when I cite these numbers, always use the word approximate, because there is always likely to be some type of staff movement. For example, we've already had people who were notified of the RIF, who have already secured other employment within the district or elsewhere. So that's why I always use the term approximate. This leaves, once, once we notify these approximate 193 employees that they can maintain their positions, it leaves approximately 45 employees who would technically be impacted by RIF. However, as Mr. Kingsley pointed out, because of recent movement, we are projecting that we would be able to recall, based on seniority, approximately 23 employees in addition. So that's why there is a net impact of about 22 employees who may end up being laid off as a result of action. But I just, again, it's approximate, we're continuing to work aggressively to try to, you know, reassign people where it's appropriate. We do have to follow the guidelines that we have when we establish a reduction in force, and again, that's primarily based on someone's seniority, when we're asking to reassign them, or selecting people to reassign them to another site where there is a vacancy. And then for the people who are ultimately impacted, which we hope that number will continue to decrease, we are still working with them, and the HR team is working with them to identify other options within the district that they may, that may be a good fit for them, and doing the best we can to, to help in what obviously is, is not the, an ideal situation, and we understand that. So thank you for allowing me to explain the process going forward.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our action items for tonight. So now we're going to move on to reports. The first is going to be our regular readiness metrics report, and I will turn to the superintendent for this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report will be a hybrid report. We will have two staff members, Damon Willis and Monica Damian, who will be joining us virtually, and our chief human resources officer, Christine Peugeot, who thought she was leaving, is present. So with that, I am going to toss it over to Mr. Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Hello, distinguished board members. I'll go ahead and share my screen here and get us started. Okay, so tonight, we'll be going over two reports, our CMS readiness dashboard, along with our COVID breakdown report. These are, these are for the week ending March 19th, 2021. And we'll begin with our public health metrics. So in terms of our case rate per 100,000, we did shift back over to red with 112.6 cases per 100,000. For reference, last week, we were at 98. So we had a bump up of almost 15 cases that shifted us back to red. In terms of test positivity percentage, we remain in green at 4.8%. Next, we have our district-level case monitoring, schools with at least one positive case. And this week, we remain in red with 56 schools, which is a decrease of 13 schools in contrast to last week. In terms of schools with quarantined individuals, we remain, we remain in green for that metric. Next, we have our school-level case monitoring. For cases within a school, we have 24 schools with two or more cases, so we remain in yellow. Last week, we had 23 schools for that metric, so we're roughly about the same. In terms of roughly about the same. In terms of school clusters, we remain in green. Next, taking a look at individuals in active quarantine, we have shifted over to yellow for that metric here. Next, we'll move on to district operational metrics, beginning with child nutrition, remaining in green at 94.1%. So, we're up almost half a percentage point there. In terms of transportation, we remain in green at 92.6%, which is a, a decrease of about 2% in contrast to last week. Next, we have our custodial staff coverage. We shifted over to green for this metric. Last week, we were in yellow, so we continue to move in the right direction in terms of custodial staff coverage. And our full-time nurse coverage remains in yellow at 73%, just like last week. Lastly, here, we have our school readiness metrics, beginning with instructional staff. This week, we're at 93.4%, so we're, we're up almost one percentage point. In terms of our school facility, infection control and PPE supplies, we remain at 100% for those metrics. In finishing up with our health and safety training, we remain in green above 95% for that metric. So, what I'll go ahead and do is move on to the COVID breakdown report, and then if there's any questions, we'll be happy to fill those right after this, this report here. Okay, so, next, moving on to our COVID breakdown report. I won't read through every school here, I'll allow folks to take a look. But I just wanted to reiterate that there has been an addition to this report. So, anytime that you see a blue asterisk on this report, it's referring to at least one classroom shift from in-person learning to remote learning due to quarantine. So, the threat, minimum threshold is one classroom in order to have an asterisk that you'll see on specific schools for this report. So, with that, I'll scroll down pretty slowly. And as you can see here, we have Berryhill Pre-K through eighth with an asterisk in terms of quarantines. We also have one there for Hickory Grove. And next, as we scroll down a bit more, you see one for Nation's Ford Elementary, Parkside Elementary as well. And finally, Winterfeld Elementary as well. And in terms of other district sites, we had four positive cases there as well. With that, I'd like to open up the floor for questions.
Okay, any board members, any questions about this week's metrics report? And I know we had a similar report on Monday, so it's not news to the nine of us. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for the update. For our next report, I am going to turn to the Superintendent to introduce a middle-of-the-year report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As our Chief Accountability Officer, Equity Officer, Dr. Frank Barnes makes his way to the podium, I do want to just share, I know we had a conversation earlier about ASAP and encouraging families to register. They, families, you may go online to the ASAP site under the departments section of our website, and there is a tab there where you can begin registering for the remainder of this school year. So, I just wanted to share that information, and I'm sure that Ms. Fowler will put that on her social media account as well. So, thank you, thank you in advance. Dr. Barnes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair, members of the board. What I want to bring you today is a look at our fall end-of-course results from this December. On March 3rd, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction staff provided the State Board of Education what I would say was a veering from usual practice. And they ended up what I would call a mid-year report of fall results. District, school districts across the state, including us in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, are following suit, following the lead of the State Board to provide our communities a snapshot of where we were at that time. What I'll be providing to you will be state profile, which we, members of our listening audience can look at more deeply if they download the deck. But I want to show you our Charlotte Mecklenburg school performance. It will be at the district level, not schools or learning communities, but it will be in the aggregate and for certain subgroups, so you can get a snapshot in that way. What I do want to acknowledge, there'll be four different end-of-course exams we'll be looking at, Math 1, Math 3, English 2, and Biology. I want to make also, just to acknowledge, the same types of data considerations that the State Board was asked to consider by the North Carolina Department of Instruction staff. And that's just acknowledging that we're talking about, as we're doing these comparisons, both one year to the next, and state to our district, that we're talking about different testing windows across the state at the different times, based on what theirs, their annual calendar was. Recognizing that we're talking about different groups of students, these aren't the same students over time, these are students who tested last fall, and student, and I mean fall, I mean the winter of 2019 as opposed to the winter of 2020. And that some students had been receiving exclusively remote instruction statewide, and some had been experiencing stuff of a hybrid or in-person instruction statewide. So, that's important to know. It's also important to recognize that the number of students tested by subgroup varies for this different period. And the larger the subgroup or the smaller the subgroup could impact those results. But with all that said, allow me to walk you through these data and answer any questions that you may have. What you'll see as I walk through this deck is you'll see two different colored of the tables. The purple tables are state-level results. The CMS blue tables are CMS results. And they'll go back and forth in that order. Once again, I won't belabor looking at the state-level results. Our listening public can look at those as they download deck, but I'll focus most on the CMS results. This first slide looks at test-taking rates. What you see in the top cop, in the top row, far-right column here, is you can see the percent tested across the state for the fall, and that was 86.3%. What you see as a state is you see that the highest tested groups were white sub, the white subgroup, and academically or intellectually gifted, or AIG students. And as a state, the lowest tested group was black students, which was 77.3%. Let's compare that to what that looked like in our own school district here. What you see is we had a little bit higher percentage tester rate of about 88%. And that our highest percentage tested group was right there for still whites and academically or intellectually gifted students. And you can see for black and Hispanic students, but the rate was higher at about 84% tested. And like I said, for white or intellect, academically or intellectually gifted students, around 95% tested. Understanding that under usual or comp, or usual conditions, the federal required floor for the percent tested is 95%. What you can see that in both, what you can see that in both the state and for CMS, neither of us were able to achieve that 95% threshold, given the pandemic conditions. The results that, for those students who were tested, what you'll see in both the CMS slides and the state slides is a different way of presenting these, and we followed suit with how the state presented their data to allow comparison. And what they did was, is what you'll see in subsequent presentations that I make before you, is the focus, as opposed to level 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, the state has moved to looking at students they would say are not proficient, which are level 1 and 2. Yes, ma'am?
I would just ask, Madam Chair, to have the slide deck put on board docs or emailed to us, because I can't see the screen from here. So, if that would...
It's on Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Sawyer. Appreciate it. So, what you see is this focus on what would be the not proficient, which think of it as the old level 1 or level 2. Then you see the focus on level 3, level 4, and level 5. What the state slides, as well as our own slides, will do is they'll compare two years, fall 1920 with fall 2021. So, that's the format in which these data will be presented. What I'm going to, as I walk through these slides at a brisk pace to, so we can get to the, of the conversation, is I'll be focusing some on this not percent, not proficient. And then, I'll ask you to focus a little bit on level 4 and 5, and I think this area of not proficient, for our purposes of this conversation, are most salient. What you see here is for us as a state, going Biology, English 2, Math 1, and Math 3, that percent not proficient in Biology increased nearly 13 percentage points. For English 2, which is an anomaly, you saw almost no change, maybe 1 to 2 percentage points, but was an anomaly when you look across the four subjects. In Math 1, you saw an increase from 48 to 66% of our students statewide who were tested in the fall are not proficient. And for North Carolina, Math 3, you saw about 45% to about 55% not proficient. As a state, we're seeing that the, the instruction, not just remotely, but during a pandemic, has had an impact on students' performance on end-of-course exams thus far. When we look at ourselves as CMS, and once again, the CMS blue being the CMS table, the purple being the state table, you see some comparable trends, but a little bit different performance. You see, we went from approximately 40%, 39% of students not proficient in Biology, to about half of our students not proficient. In English 2, you saw just a slight change of about a percentage point and a half, 2 percentage points, not increase in percentage, not student proficient. And in Math 1, you saw a dramatic increase, as well as in North Carolina, Math 3, in the percent of students not proficient. So, what you're seeing in our district data is following the same trend as we're seeing statewide. Allow me to drill down across these four subjects, looking at particular subgroups. So, what you see here is the state data, and what you can see is across, there'll be these subgroups across all of the tests. I want to point out one thing, both for you as well as for our listening audience. The state reported on one particular group, economically disadvantaged students. We aren't able at this time to make those kind of disaggregations in our district. Instead, we made a proxy. What we did is using the same kind of metrics that we use when we're talking about low SES, moderate SES, or high SES, trying to create economic diversity in our schools. We use that same metric based on where students live and their census tract, to identify students who would have lived in a low SES census tract. I want to acknowledge that because you live in a low SES census tract, does not mean you're low income. I recognize that it's an imperfect measure, but we wanted to provide you some type of proxy to look at that economically disadvantaged student group. So, I want you to give us a little bit of grace, but we did not want to be completely silent for that group of students who we're concerned about, but it's an imperfect metric. But what you'll see here across these is you can see the change in the percent not proficient, seeing particularly the increase for our black and Hispanic students, and this is Biology, and for other subgroups as well. What we're seeing across all of the subgroups in Biology, although the change in magnitude might vary some, all the subgroups saw an increase in the students, percent of students tested who are not proficient this fall. When we look at our own CMS subgroups, you see something comparable. I want to let you know that what we did here, and I cannot explain why the state did not do this, but we wanted to acknowledge some basic data conventions and norms, is that if a subgroup was either above 95% or below 5%, we redacted those numbers in order to protect the identity of students that someone who might be out of school could figure out what a specific student scored. That would be a violation of that student's privacy. And so, we wanted to make sure that we kept it at this level and disaggregated it. And we left markers where you can see where if it's below 95, or in any case where you see it might be above 95. But what you see nevertheless, is also you see the state is provided here, the CMS total, and then the subgroups for a particular subject. So, although the percent of students not proficient is lower in CMS than the state, we still stay in Biology, approximately half of our students who were tested in the fall were not proficient, was an increase from around 39%. And you can see how that has varied and increased for various subgroups, particularly if you look at our black and Hispanic students, and the students who we identified that lived in that low SES tract. But even for higher-performing subgroups, you see for our white and for our Asian subgroups, which is redacted. But for our white students subgroups, you saw an increase in the percent of students not proficient. And you saw some changes in the percent level 4 or level 5. That's something we need to acknowledge and be aware of. As we go to English 2, again, this was an area where it was somewhat of an anomaly across the four tested areas, where changes were only subtle and incremental, whether it be up or down. Once again, this being purple, this is the state-level slide. And what you can see is, across the subgroups, there was only small changes. But as a state, as a state, you can see there's some subgroups that a large proportion of students were scoring not proficient, and there were some where smaller subgroups were performing not proficient. Let's look at our own district's data in comparison through the state, state context. You see, here is although a substantially lower percentage in number of students were, were not proficient compared to the state, we still have larger subgroups that were not proficient, particularly our black and Hispanic students, and our students who live in the low SES census tract compared to their white peers or their Asian peers here. Although the numbers changed, might be up or down, even here, for example, the percent of students who were not proficient for black students actually decreased. In this case, a decrease is a positive thing. The overall percent of students not proficient in English 2 was still too high for some of our subgroups. Once again, this is an anomaly. Let's look at mathematics, both Math 1 and Math 3, for the state and CMS. What you see here in North Carolina, Math 1, which can be, which is for, in the fall, was customer taken by high school students. What you're seeing here is, as a state, you're seeing a large increase across some of the subgroups of students who are not proficient. And I want to draw as a state to provide context, what we're seeing is, based on the fall testing, approximately 83% of black students who were tested in the fall were not proficient, and approximately 75% of Hispanic students were not proficient. But even for our white students, who tend to be a higher-scoring subgroup for both the state and us, nearly 55% of white students who took the Math 1 fall assessment were not proficient. How does this look compared to our district results? What you see here is, although a short, smaller percentage of our students in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools who tested in the fall were not proficient, across some of our subgroups, you still see the, I'd say for black students from 53 to 78, or Hispanic students from 49 to 75, and even for some of our white students from 13 to 31% when I round. We're seeing the impacts of, of the COVID instructional conditions. And I do want to say this is something that we didn't address before. I want to say this on behalf of our educators, behalf of our families, is that we're not just experiencing remote teaching. We are trying to teach and learn through a global pandemic. And that is different than just remote instruction. What we're seeing is the, the cumulative impacts of that experience on our kids and our students. When we look at North Carolina, Math 3, for the state, once again, you're seeing across some of the subgroups, the large proportions of some subgroups not going proficient as a state. For us, as a district, you see here, although the percent of who aren't proficient, approximately 46, is below what the state is at around 55, you still see market increases in the percent of students who are not proficient for some subgroups, for all subgroups, but particularly large for black and Hispanic, and students living in the low SES tract compared with their white or Asian peers. We want to provide you this snapshot, so that you can see what we're seeing in our early results, that the impacts of COVID on our that the impacts of COVID on our instructional conditions, on the performance of our students, is showing up on summative assessments that the state requires we administer. So as the superintendent has said, as our team has said in other instances, that the effects of this pandemic is going to create a multi-phase, multi-year recovery effort. And those recovery efforts are underway, but they are in no way complete. The first phase, we've been grappling with for quite some time, and that's bringing students back to in-person instruction. One modification I can make on this slide, based on your earlier vote, is this is no longer two days, but it would be four days a week until we get to May 10. So first thing we want to do is for those students who choose to, to maximize the number of students we can bring back to school for in-person instruction safely. That has been our first phase and first effort that we want to do. Our teachers are doing a tremendous job to teach in hybrid settings, to teach remotely, to teach those students in person. But we want to maximize the number of students we can bring back safely. That's the first phase of our work. The second phase of our work will begin in earnest this summer, but the planning for it began months ago, led by our academic team, in particular, leadership of my colleague, Brian Kingsley. And what we will be launching is a summer learning and enrichment program this summer. It will be a six-week in-person program that will be free of charge. We'll be offering it to all CMS families. However, 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 to our listening audience, there will be a cap in our overall capacity to be able to serve, which will be 50,000 students. We will give first priorities to students who have been struggling academically, students who are homeless in our McKenney-Vento program, and for our English learner newcomers. But after that, we will serve as many who don't fall in that category, who would like to participate in this program, who we can. Again, it will be free of charge. Students will get access to transportation, subsidized breakfast and lunch. There'll be physical activity, think enrichment-type of activities. There'll be social, emotional, learning supports, and they'll get access to CMS technology. There will be a preregistration window, which will begin next Monday, the 29th, and can close on April 9th, so that we can be well-prepared for the families that say they would like to take advantage of this opportunity. The preregistration will be exclusively digital, but it's been translated into nine languages, for a total of 10 languages that it will be offered in. It can be taken on any device, a cellphone, an iPad, a child's computer, the Chromebook that we provide. We encourage our families to take advantage of this. Once again, there will be a cap in capacity, and we've created some prioritization. So consider this a preregistration. Schools will also be reaching out to families to encourage them to participate. This is not mandatory. This is not mandatory, but it's something we want to offer our families. They'll close the gap to finish the instruction and the teaching and the learning that is so unfinished during this pandemic times. The third phase, we'll talk to you about in a few minutes, and that's our budget. Our budget for the 2122 school year, where we're going to be focusing on specific strategic efforts aligned to our strategic plan that we want to begin implementing. And the fourth phase will be the year 22, 2022, and beyond. This will be a multi-phase, multi-year effort based on the results we see. This performance picture, at this point, is incomplete. The majority of our students who take our EOCs and all of our students who take end-of-grade assessments have not been tested yet. They'll do so in May. But based on the picture we have right now, we see the work that has to be done. With that, I want to take any questions, entertain discussion, but wanted to let you know what we're seeing and how we're beginning to act on it right now. But this is only the first step, what is going to be an arduous task, but I believe our superintendent, this board, and our team is well up to the task.
Okay, definitely feel a sense of gravity, seeing those official numbers for the first time. And we do have our work ahead of us, and we'll dive in, and we'll do it. Any questions? Ms. Byers-Bailey?
So we're going to be offering opportunities for recovery of learning over the summer. But this is not school as usual. Is that correct?
You've said it better than I have said it, Ms. Byers-Bailey. This is not school as usual, though there'll be academic content, there'll be enrichment opportunities, different electives that students may pick, so there can be both joy and play, but there'll be learning as well.
So in order to encourage some of our students who might think this is just more school, what are some of the fun things that they're going to get to do?
I will not say that this will be at every site, but this is part of the portfolio of things that we can be able to offer. There could be things like the visual and performing arts, being able to draw, painting, dance, athletic opportunities, anything from weightlifting to sports, different things that students would like and entertain, music, be it instruments or choral, things that they can entertain, the things that they've been wanting to do with other students. But the pandemic has restrained them from being able to express in person with some of their classmates until these recent decisions that you've made. Those are some of the things that we'll be able to offer, but there'll be additional information coming out that'll do a better job than I'm here. But yes, it won't be summer school. It's something, a summer enrichment program we're offering.
Okay, so there might be some water involved?
There might be some water involved, but I will not make that promise for every site.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms., did I see your hand? Ms. Delahara?
Well, I do have one quick question, also related to the summer learning program, Jennifer Delahara. I know you mentioned there's a prioritization in the preregistration process. So, and you may not know this, it's okay, I know we're still trying to figure all this out, but I was just sort of curious, like, for families, will they just be put on, like, sort of a waitlist, and they'll be notified if they are in? Or maybe, I know, I believe, one of our concerns is we may have to combine schools. There may not be enough students at a particular school, and there'll be some consolidation. So will they just be communicated to along the way and then told which assignment they're given, even if it's not their home school? I'm just trying to provide a little more reassurance to maybe our listeners about what that will look like.
Yes, ma'am, you articulated that. So there'll be a preregistration, and then those who preregister, they'll get a follow-up message to number one, to confirm that the preregistration was received. And then they'll get a confirmation, say, whether you're registering a program or whether we won't be able to serve you at this time. So we'll be going through, this will be open, the preregistration, open to all students, all families. And so we'll be going through all of the preregistrants to be able to see if they meet one of those criteria for prioritization. And then we'll be going through to make sure that, once we get to our capacity service limit, that then communicate to families. I would say that that's probably going to take place in the first week of May. If we can do it sooner, we will, but we want to make sure that we do our due diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Sawyer?
Can you explain to me how it will look for high school students who may need to complete one or more courses in order to be on track for graduation or to make up for learning lost instruction?
Sure, there'll be a mix of different opportunities. Certainly, there always will be an opportunity, apart from this program, with credit recovery as appropriate with certain conditions and constraints. But in many cases, this would look just like if they were coming to school but with a greater opportunity for electives and engagement and face-to-face feedback from their teachers to be able to work with their colleagues. We're still working right now with our high school principals to say, how can we make this attractive to that, I'll say, more mature student audience? Where for an elementary audience or even a younger middle grades audience, this might be more naturally attractive, but to making sure that it's age-appropriate and that they would see this as a viable option as well, particularly when some of them may have opportunities to get jobs, which is important for them and their families.
So it may not, they may not be required to do a full day, like the elementary full-day kind of program?
That is correct, because this is not a requirement. This is something that's an option being offered. And so we want to make it something that can be attractive to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ship?
Lenora Ship, when we say enrichment, a lot of times it's, you know, are we talking about making sure we are advancing students, those students who want to come that need more? So when we talk about enrichment, are we talking specifically to making sure that those students know that it's something for them too, some that need to continue to push that learning? So are we making sure that group clearly understands what is for them? What kind of programs we providing for the enrichment students?
We'll certainly do our very best. What we want to do is add a rich academic component that's complemented by that enrichment component, to be able to have joy and play. So we want to be able to provide both something that can deal with some of those foundational skills and some of those standards that we want to enrich for students, as well as have that, I would say, enrichment co-curricular activity, where there's actually joyful play as part of their full-day experience.
And how are community partnerships going to be involved? Like Y Readers, Freedom School, have we looked at that? Is that in that 50,000 students, or is this an addition to? Because I just mentioned Y Readers has the swimming, somebody mentioned water activities. But is that being looked at, and how is that being looked at with summer learning?
Our academics team has been playing a great leadership role and has actually been partnering with partner organizations throughout the whole year. What they've begun to do is to reach out to partners and ask if they could partner with specific sites that they've had historical relationships with. So if there was a Y Readers program, this Y Readers would exist alongside this CMS summer leadership, summer learning program. But where appropriate and possible, we want to ask those partners to push in to help broaden the enrichment opportunities that we're able to offer during the day. But I do want to say, Ms. Ship, that our academics team has been doing a great job. If there's other content questions, I want to make sure they have an opportunity to represent their work well, because they've been putting in countless hours to try to plan this, so it's a great experience. And I don't want to misrepresent some work that they've been leading and putting together. Sure.
Dr. Barnes, I want to thank you. What he said is absolutely spot-on. We are asking partners to work in partnership with our Family and Community Engagement Office if they are interested. We have had people apply to partner with us already and have gone through an approval process. And those are working to make sure that they are partnering with principals at the school level to integrate either their programs into our CMS summer camp programming, or in the event, if they're already a prior-approved program, like Dr. Barnes referenced, Y Readers, Freedom Schools. We have a really incredible church that has partnered historically with McClintock Middle School. Those particular partners are working to think about how to integrate and also think about after-school programs and on Fridays as well. So there's lots of opportunities there.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Transportation for the summer learning, are we offering that?
Yes, ma'am, we are. So part of what the preregistration form does, and it's only about six different fields that we had, no, I'm glad you're asking, is families could request whether they want AM transportation, PM transportation, or both, or neither. And so those are things that we're taking up, so we can build transportation schedules that could accommodate families. So if you said, I just want to drop off my kids in the morning, but I'll pick them up in the afternoon, that would be something that would be an option available.
All right, parents, between this and what we voted on earlier tonight, it's a lot of information for parents to react to right now.
And Ms. Dash, I do want to say that that was something our team considered greatly in light of the vote that we anticipated you might make this evening. And so we made sure that we did not open this registration window until after that other survey was done, because a family could inadvertently think that they responded to one when they responded to the other. And we wanted to let, make sure one closed, and then we opened. You'll notice this opens on the 29th, the other closed on the 26th. With, of course, more time until April 1st, if you so chose. But I want to restate what Ms. Cheek said. If you could please answer early, not often, but early, so that we can plan properly.
Okay, well, thank you. And when we get closer to opening up that preregistration, please let the board help you get the word out with our constituents and our networks.
Thank you, ma'am.
All righty, thank you very much. Next, we have a very important report from the superintendent, and that is the presentation of his recommended budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. And I turn to Superintendent Winston for this report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I will give it a moment so that our viewing public will be able to follow along with us on the screen. And I will note that the budget presentation is posted online for those who want to follow us that way. Thank you. So good evening again. I am going to share with you, and I have the privilege of doing so, our proposed funding plan for the 2021-2022 school year. And I think it's very important, for context, to spend just a little bit of time reflecting on where we've been, so that we can fully appreciate where we, what we must do to move forward. And it is my intention, by the end of this presentation, to have you understand where we are, have a firm understanding of our plans to address the needs, and finally, understand the ask of our funding partners. So we will never hear the words COVID or pandemic again without thinking about how the world has changed, and most importantly, how each of us has had to adapt to the changes that were happening all around us. COVID has literally affected every industry, every organization, and every system you can think of. From an economic standpoint, businesses shut down, schools were closed, countless people were laid off from work. Women exited the workplace in higher numbers. And in our very own city, many members of our community were forced to create a homestead of tents for shelter through the pandemic. COVID ravished our health, both physically and psychologically. Tens of thousands of people became sick here in our Mecklenburg County. Hundreds died. Communities and families changed forever. We also saw an impact on our families. With people out of work and kids home from school, we came to learn quickly that we had a significant role to play in feeding families in Charlotte and Mecklenburg. Simply put, the challenges related to food insecurity found their way to our school doors. We also saw an impact on staffing. Our staff stepped up and met the challenge of preparing well over 1 million meals in the first few months of the pandemic. We had to create, we had to be creative with ways to provide services. And one of those ways, or two, I should say, was our very own version of meals on wheels and curbside pickup. We also saw the impact on our community. Even our traditions, such as faith and family gatherings, have been impacted. Normalcy was interrupted. Holidays in 2020 were, they were different. The impact on work. And perhaps, and this is a picture that's familiar to all of you all, perhaps in ways that we couldn't quite seem to fathom a year ago, COVID interrupted our way of work. Every aspect of what we know and how we operated had to be adjusted. I'm moving just a tad bit too fast.
Yeah, so good.
And our education was impacted as well. So ultimately, our entire way of teaching and learning was interrupted. We were forced to move to teaching remotely. This was an undertaking for both staff and students. And last spring, we left abruptly, forcing us to figure out how to get content to students online. Until that point, we hadn't considered how to provide online instruction to every student. And so our team, our entire team worked tirelessly through the spring and summer to develop online courses because we knew we had to be prepared to do school in an all remote setting in August of 2020. And what we know for sure is that we have had students who have struggled and are still struggling with remote learning. We have had students who are thriving in an all remote environment, and yet we have other students who are getting by. But what's important to note is that all of our students didn't get everything needed this year. And even with the best curriculum and the best teachers, and I would put our teachers up against any in the country, nothing can substitute in-person instruction. And I've spent some time talking to students, Ms. Fowler and other students across our district, and they have shared how difficult this year has been, both academically and socially and emotionally. Speaking of emotional impact, perhaps the most substantial negative impact has been on our children's psychological and mental health. From experiencing extreme loss to having to adapt to a new way of life, all of it has been traumatic. Many of our older students have shared that they are stressed and are concerned about their own mental health. We believe that the best place for kids to learn is in a school building with great teachers, supportive staff, and their peers. And one of the ways that we must be responsive to the needs, to their needs, is through our budget, and that is to invest in their social and emotional rehabilitation. The impact on the classroom, I do believe that the new ways of working, teaching, and learning, we have had to figure all of this out. And this has and will continue to generate innovations that will continue for some time. And our staff has done an incredible job of rising to the occasion to meet this challenge of teaching in a new way. I cannot stress that enough. And then as it relates to safety, our definition of safety has expanded to include such things as air quality and air circulation, social distancing, and wearing face coverings. This is our new normal. Our daily routines include screenings, attestations, and quarantines. As my teammate, Dr. Barnes, just said a few moments ago, this is a one-year pandemic, but it will require a multi-phase and a multi-year response. And so this month, we marked one year of living through this pandemic. There were significant equity issues prior to COVID, and the pandemic didn't create these inequities, only exacerbated them. And these equity issues demanded our attention then, and they do now as well. So we know that students didn't get everything they needed this past year. And we also know that all of their needs brought on by the pandemic cannot be addressed and resolved in one year. And so we have to be very clear that our response will take multiple years. And some of our students have lost substantial ground this past year, and we are committed to closing gaps. But it is going to take all of us, and it will take resources. So where are we now? What we know now is that the gaps that existed before have widened because of the pandemic. Access was a challenge for a large number of our students. Some students didn't have access to the internet, or perhaps they were challenged with not having devices or access to material and supplies. So the opportunity to access critical items was an issue for some students. We know that 50,000 students who are considered academically at risk. We also know that we have significantly high numbers of students who are struggling with social and emotional issues as a result of the pandemic. And lastly, academic performance has slipped. This means we have significant work to do with all of our students, as mentioned in the report earlier, and we've got hard work to do. And so there are many factors that are impacting our students' performance and well-being. And there are things in our control, and there are also things outside of our control. We know that there are things that we have little to no influence over, and they are things out of our control. We can't control pandemic impact, food insecurity, changing political environment, economic inequality, and the housing crisis. But CMS can influence and support equity of opportunity, reliable transportation to school, inspire with great teaching and curriculum, safe and healthy buildings, and social and emotional support. These are the things we have direct influence over and the things that we are focused on. One of, one of the first and most immediate responses to meeting the needs of our students and addressing the achievement gap is our summer learning plan. The team has worked to design, as you heard a few moments ago, a six-week summer camp for our students that we're calling Camp CMS. You heard some of the details in Dr. Barnes' presentation, and we have prioritized students who have struggled to pass a course and some of our younger students who were behind at the start of the year. This is an example of a way that we've leveraged federal COVID dollars to meet a specific pandemic-related need. So as we transition from the summer into next school year, we know that we must provide great teaching and also social and emotional supports for both students and staff. We have to focus on this because we know that students need to make up for the lost time outside of school buildings. And we also recognize that staff and students will need support in dealing with the impact of COVID in every aspect of their lives. And so here you see a slide, and there are no people in this slide. Facilities are the biggest ask because they are a need now and plays dividends for a long time to come. Facility needs are aligned with our strategic plan. And what you will see here are pictures of some of our older buildings with older HVAC systems and schools with windows that do not open. And so it's important to note that our older buildings were designed this way. And so as part of our operating budget request, we're seeking $5 million for preventive maintenance, and that will cover inspections and minor repairs of major building components to extend their useful life. As part of our capital request, we're seeking $18 million in sustainment that will cover replacements of major building components such as chillers, boilers, roofs, tracks, tennis courts, and other items. For security enhancement, we're requesting $2.1 million for items such as camera server replacements at the remaining 64 schools and exterior door replacements at middle schools. And as part of our capital outlay ask, we're seeking nearly $5 million to replace and repair various building component parts such as HVAC compressors, variable frequency drives, and intercom headends, as well as fire alarms. And then we are also asking for about $10.5 million for our bus garages, specifically to construct two 20,000 square feet garage facilities for our North Point and Downs Road transportation centers. So this, what you see on this slide is, I just wanted to lift up that this is the third and final year of a three-year project that we've termed our modernization project. You'll see it listed as Enterprise Resource Planning Systems. This project is defined, is designed to increase efficiency in our key business functions, and this is an investment of $1.5 million. We are also investing in our employees, salaries and benefits for our employees. This amount includes a 3% increase in salaries of teachers and other certified staff, non-certified staff, and our assistant principals. And it also includes health and retirement projected increases. We anticipate increased charter school enrollment, and we're asking for $7.6 million in this area. And we're expecting just under 2,000 new students in charter school. Now, I will also lift up that we're expecting additional students next year in our district, and that our enrollment, we believe, will bounce back, perhaps not to pre-COVID levels, but we do expect an increase in student enrollment in our district. As we think about where we want to be and the outcomes we desire for our students, we think about expansion of initiatives and programs that, some of which we've received funding for in the past, and some are new strategies that we believe could positively impact student outcomes. And the first in this category is student wellness and academic support. You will remember that we've been on a path to get our caseloads to a manageable staff-to-student ratio. And we also know that given the pandemic, that our students need and they require more connection from counselors, psychologists, and social workers. These employees are integral in getting our students the emotional and psychological support that they need and require coming out of the pandemic. And one of the areas that we have identified as a strategic priority is addressing disproportionality and chronic absenteeism. We have actually prioritized reducing the number of Black and Brown students who are suspended. We know that some behaviors warrant a timeout, but how and what we do with students during that timeout matters. We are proposing a pilot of 10 behavior and support centers in middle and high schools. And the focus of these centers is to create a consistent, a consistent in-school suspension model that focuses on addressing the core issues related to the student's behavior as well as examining the behavior of the adults who are in direct contact with the students. This pricing is really the cost of the change in the staffing model. Another major budget ask that you'll see here is for preventive maintenance. I cannot stress enough the importance of taking care of our facilities and our core systems so that we can maximize their life cycle. This is really to prevent breakdowns and emergency repairs. This is an investment of $5 million. And there is also a budget ask for additional staffing and operating costs for the office of a general counsel and compliance office. So what you hear, what you see here on this slide, this is our total request, which is approximately $26.5 million over the last year's allocation. I want to bring your attention to the two pie charts here. This is an overview of our funding sources of our overall operating budget. You'll see that on the left-hand side. And the headline here is an increase in the share of federal funding as a part of our overall funding streams. Last year, you'll see that, well, you'll see noted here that federal and other grants would make up 28% of our sources. Last year, this category was about 10%. So it has almost tripled thanks to our infusion of COVID dollars. The second pie chart shows how we use the money. And so you will notice that our salary and benefits usually make up about 80%, but you will see here that it is down to about 70%. You'll also see an increase in other categories attributed to the increased COVID-related federal funds we've received. For your reference, we've included a handout in your packet which explains in detail the federal COVID-19 funding and what we've spent the money on. In January, we shared with you all the details about the COVID funding that we have received this fiscal year. And so on this slide, you will see expenditures from this fiscal year for things like school health support, technology for students, specifically hotspots, laptops, and iPads. School health support, you've heard a lot about our nurse extenders, as well as technology for staff. We have another, we have another graph here that we wanted to just share with you all. And I think the, one of the most important pieces of this particular slide is the picture in the middle. And it, what it signifies is that we have a lot of temporary and specific COVID-related dollars because the pandemic has created a significant financial emergency for school systems across the country, and the government has responded by providing funding to school systems. And so we recognize that this puts us in a unique position. We have funding to address COVID-specific needs like infrastructure, learning loss, and COVID-related facility investments. But the challenge, the challenge is that it isn't a long-term fix. We've got to be intentional about making sure that we ask for what we need to address the needs that were existing prior to COVID. And so our federal funding forecast is good, but it isn't long-term. We have prioritized what we can address immediately using our federal funds, but we must be clear that there are things that require a longer-term commitment from our local partners. And so what you see here is our total proposed budget, and this is an overall summary of our complete budget, including our inner- our complete budget, including our enterprise funds. So how does this budget line up with our strategic plan? I want to first remind everyone that the district was executing on our strategic plan before COVID hit. COVID significantly impacted our work towards meeting the goals set forth in the plan, but make no mistake, the goals and strategies in our focus areas are absolutely the right thing to do for kids, and that has not changed. And so we have the opportunity, we have the opportunity to respond to the urgent needs that the pandemic created for us while also remaining steadfast in working the strategies in our strategic plan. Our goals have not changed. We are committed, perhaps now more than ever, that we want every student to graduate with meaningful employment or higher education opportunities. And we also want to make sure that every student has access to a rich, diverse, and rigorous curriculum. And finally, a goal that has new meaning today. Every student having access to more social and emotional support. This is incredibly important. And we set targets in the original plan, and it is important to note that those targets will need to be renormed because last year, there was no state testing. This year, 2021, we will test. And so I get this question a lot. Are you measuring, are you monitoring progress? And if so, how do you do it? How do you know if something is working or not working? And so the answer to the question, are we monitoring progress? The answer is yes. Through our continuous improvement work, we've set goals and targets, and through the intentional habit of plan, do, check, act, we monitor our progress and adjust as needed. And so our budget process did not start with a blank slate. It did begin with our strategic goals and identifying work within the focus areas to Moving just a tad bit too fast. So what's next? We have some upcoming engagement opportunities, and you will see those dates and opportunities here. The first opportunity is on March the 25th, which is on Thursday. And that will be followed the next week by another community engagement event. And you'll see the other dates listed here on the slide. And we hope, we encourage members of our community to join us at these virtual budget And so tonight, you've heard what we have determined, the best funding path forward. And there is a lot of work to do, make no doubt about it. There's a lot of work to do, and as the slide says, we can do this together. And so we've asked for what we've needed and look forward to celebrating with our students on their success. Madam Chair, thank you. And with that, I will turn it back to you. I will also note that while this is my recommendation, we will have, as you saw on the screen, a work session scheduled to go more in-depth and to answer more detailed questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, guys, it's a late night, but we're, you know, we've got good stamina, so go ahead and turn to questions, and I see Dr. Jones and then Ms. Delahara.
Okay, I have a question and a request, a question, a request and a statement. Are those behavior and support centers that you're recommending secondary only or elementary and secondary?
I'm sorry, Dr. Jones, can you?
The behavior, you spoke of establishing behavior and support centers. Are they specifically designed for secondary students or secondary and elementary? I guess I'd just like a report on what that looks like, what that model is and the student population that it will serve. You don't have to speak to that this moment. I'd like it in writing, please.
We will provide that, Dr.
The gaps you talked about, I always try to see a learning experience. What we're going through now in terms of COVID and all, it's social, emotional learning, the character traits of resilience and flexibility, that needs to be what our students, our children learn because life is not going to be that rosy all the time. And they are at a point, at a juncture in their lives that, yes, it may be once in a lifetime, we don't know what's ahead, but resilience and flexibility, we used to teach those character traits specifically. So the more we can tie those in with our youngsters as they return to school, I think is great, and it's a part of we can do this together. So that's it. I especially want to know about the, and get it in writing, this behavior and support centers that you all are proposing.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Delahara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to confirm this, almost one hundred and forty-two million from the CRSA funding, that's rolled into the federal, the total of the five hundred and eighty-seven. I just want to confirm that, that's all of that? And the reason I'm asking is because, and maybe I had misunderstood, but is some of that money, are we not allowed to use, like, for the next summer's program or going into the next fiscal year? Does all of that money have to be used in this next fiscal year?
So those, that's a great question. Those funds are available through September of 2023. Those funds, the one hundred forty-one, approximately million dollars that we have commonly referred to as CRESTA.
Uh huh.
So yes, those funds are available to us for approximately another two-plus years.
But we're showing it all. I'm just trying to confirm, and again, we just got this, so I didn't have a chance to look at it beforehand, but it, that entire amount is tied in to the five hundred and eighty-seven million?
So that is part of our overall federal COVID dollars that we have received or anticipate receiving, whether it be later this spring or sometime later this year. And we anticipate using a significant amount of those dollars for our summer camp.
Right.
And then rolling those dollars over into the next school year.
Okay, okay. Well, and I look forward to the fifteenth. So I know there's tons of questions, we could go on, but we just got this, so I think the fifteenth will be very informative. So we can dig a little bit deeper and understand, to Dr. Jones' point, you know, some of the vision on maybe some new projects and the three percent pay increase and all that sort of stuff, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sawyer?
Just a couple of comments, one on slide nineteen. It would be really helpful to have a slide that actually has the figures that you read through.
Mm-hmm, I agree. The capital figures.
The capital figures aren't on a slide, and that would be really helpful to have.
Excuse me, this is, they're actually on the total proposed budget page. They are outlined there.
Okay, but just as, as he's talking about them, it would be helpful to have those
Yes, ma'am.
in front of us. And on slide twenty-two, I think it's, actually, it's probably twenty-three, slide twenty-three. I think it's important for us to highlight what is COVID money and what is, you know, Title I or Title IV. And so, like, on the pie chart of slide twenty-two, back, I don't know, yeah, back one, I think it would behoove us to break that federal dollars into two colors and have a COVID, you know, have a hashtag, you know, hash marks over part of that money or a different color to denote COVID so that we emphasize that that's a temporary wedge, that's not something that's there forever. I think, I think one of the phrases that came out over and over in the, this weekend's meeting of the Council for Great City Schools was this notion that the money that's being given to school districts, we need to ensure that our funding partners maintain their effort from past years and that this money, the federal money, is not seen as a, oh, we just, you know, we don't need to give them money because they're getting all this federal money. But those extra dollars are for specific extra programs, and I think we need to really explain that.
Thank you, Ms. Sawyer.
Any other questions tonight? Ms. Fowler?
This is a question similar to Dr. Jones. Oh, this is Brianna Fowler speaking, and it's two questions. For the behavioral and support centers, is this creating behavioral and support centers or is it maintaining? I know that we have some, some type of, I don't know, like, behavioral places right now, but are the behavioral and support centers that you're referring to in the budget new? And if so, are we mirroring other districts in regards to that?
So this would be creating, piloting those ten behavior support centers. And I will defer to the action team that actually proposed this model in terms of their research and working with other districts. We can come back and find out what other districts are doing similar things.
Thank you. I just want to put an emphasis on the support. I really like this idea.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms.
Anything else? All right. Well, I know I'm going to need to pour over this, and I will probably have about eighty questions, but it's a lot to absorb tonight and towards the end of a long meeting. So thanks to your team for putting this work together. And we have one final, very quick report, guys, before we adjourn. And for this, I'm going to turn to Charles Jeter, who is our Executive Director of Government Affairs, Policy, and Board Services, to present the proposed criteria for redrawing Board of Education Electoral Districts.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you all for having us here tonight. I am joined by two of my workgroup members, Mr. McCully and Ms. Mayes, and Mrs. Holmes is watching as well. We wanted to give you a quick update per our promise at your January meeting that as far as where we are in redistricting and the process for elections this November, as you know, there's a local legislation called North Carolina Session Law 1993-167 that outlines the processes of how we get elected here at the school board. So with that being said, what we're bringing here to you tonight is an effort to guide the work of the mapmakers, the mapmakers being Ms. Mayes, Mr. McCully, Ms. Holmes, and myself. And this is the mapmaking criteria. What are the rules of engagement this board wants us to do when we do our work to draw these maps? This is common practice. All elected bodies from the most heart adopt criteria. There's different criteria that cannot be adopted, and there's other things you have to take in consideration. But the workgroup has brought in six items for y'all to think about tonight, to consider. We will ask you to vote to approve these at your meeting in April. So tonight, we just wanted to give these to you, have time to think about them, and then as we come to you in a couple of weeks, we'll ask you to approve them. And there are six of them. As you can see, ideal population and contiguous district boundaries. The reason I started those two is they're required by law. Even if you don't approve them, we've got to do them. So we put them up here because we think it's good practice to have them as part of those, but they are basically as they described. Ideal population is your one person, one vote rule. In essence, all districts have to be roughly the same size in population. Secondarily is contiguous boundaries. You can't put Huntersville and Matthews in the same district. Well, well, you can't, especially if you do compactness of districts. But yeah, everything's got to be contiguous into one area. The next four items are choices that y'all have to make. These are not mandated by law. These are best practices, and it's the workgroup's best recommendation and best thinking going forward, and we'll hope you'll adopt these in a couple of weeks. So one of these is incumbent protection, which is very common, used almost by every map drawing system out there. And the premise of that rule basically is no two current elected members will end up being drawn in the same district in any map. We go to compactness of districts. This is, and I always use the old Mel Watt 12th District as an example, that, you know, rode up I-85 and at some point was no wider than the interstate itself, that salamander-type thing that we look at. This is really a visual cue. It's hard to define, I will concede that point. In essence, a district should look round, circular, or rectangular in nature. It should not look like a line, an animal, have appendages, or any of those type of things. So it's harder to define, I will concede, but it is, it is one of those things we think is important. No split precincts. We have one hundred and ninety-five precincts in Mecklenburg County. We recommend you do not split any of those, and you keep all precincts whole. And then the last one really gets into an issue of whether or not it's possible, based on our timing, of whether or not to be consistent with the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commission elected districts. Currently, as I said, we have one hundred and ninety-five voting precincts in Mecklenburg County. One hundred and eighty of them are identical to the county for this term. This may not be possible, depending upon when we get the data, because our requirement to draw maps is a lot sooner than the counties is under a normal cycle this year, so that could be problematic. So the mapmaking process are, in essence, the rules we put on ourselves and some guideposts that we have for y'all. One is that the four members of the workgroup will not use political data. We won't look at Republicans, we won't look at Democrats, we won't look at past voting patterns. It's all about one person, one vote, and making sure that we adhere to the criteria that y'all dropped, adopted ahead of time. If anybody calls us and asks to talk about politics, we're going to hang up on you, but kindly and gently. And so that's going to be item number one. Number two is, we're actually going to present to y'all three different maps originally. And then once we get to those three maps, we're going to do a public hearing. Obviously, the, these are the public's districts. At the end of the day, we want them to make sure we hear from their feedback and their input. Once we have those three maps, once we get the public hearing, then the workgroup will actually come back to you with a singular map and ask you to vote for it, up or down. You will not be able to amend that map, it will only be an up or down vote. And so that'll be the last step in the process. If for some reason, that final map is not approved, we will take your feedback at that night, come back at the next meeting, and present y'all another map to approve. And then the last slide of the night is Senate Bill 287, which is, once again, we cite this local law passed in 1993 that you're required to have elections this fall for your districts. You're also required to redraw after the federal decennial census. The concern is, we may not get the census data in time. In fact, I think the latest estimate is we will not get the census data until September 30th. So that begs the question, well, what happens if we don't have the decennial data in time? So what we've done is we had Senator Natasha Marcus Neander Salvador, excuse me, file a bill on our behalf on March 11th, which was a big day in today's information. The governor signed 220 that day as well. And we asked them to create a process that allows us to have the election in November of 2022, should we not have the election data in time. We picked in the bill July 19th. That is because filing for these offices is supposed to start July 23rd, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't have people going there and filing for office only to find out on August 1st or August 15th, we weren't going to be able to run. only to find out on August 1st or August 15th, we weren't going to be able to run. So that's the real catalyst, is that July 19th date. If we do not have the data by July 19th, and should this bill pass, your elections would automatically be delayed until November of 2022. With one procedural step, this board would have to make a procedural vote that would simply be to acknowledge you have not received the census data. If this bill were to pass, and if we don't get the data, the elections go to 2022, they're in November, all current district reps would, term would automatically be extended one year. So you would end up having a five-year term instead of a four-year term. And those individuals elected in November of 2022 would end up serving a three-year term. So we get back into the normal cycle of four-year cycles in different, in the staggered terms that we have here. There's a lot of information here. I know y'all have had a long night. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Madam Chair.
Any questions? Ms. Delahara?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going back to your first slide about the consistency with Mecklenburg County. I'm just curious, because you mentioned that may not be possible. When you do present this for us to vote on the mapmaking criteria, will we be putting some date? Because we couldn't conceivably wait forever, and if they just aren't going to do it because they don't have to as quickly as us, where we say if they are not ready to do their map so that we can try to align by such and such a date, this becomes null and void or it will no longer be on the table?
Yeah, I think that's why we have the item in italicism and red at the bottom is, once again, assuming it's feasible based on that timing of the Board of County Commissioners.
I guess I'm just suggesting when the motion comes forward, we go ahead and address it so we don't have to go back and vote again and say, hey, they just couldn't comply for whatever reason. We had a good faith effort, and then we have to pass another motion.
And this is up to us. These are suggestions. You're going to get our feedback.
Y'all are going to have, we're going to ask you to approve these.
Not necessarily the final list.
And those boundaries are very dissimilar at this point. We do not have at all the same boundaries as the county commission. They're very dissimilar.
And I'm not opposed to us aligning them. I'm just trying to think, in case they're not ready, because you suggested that they may not be ready. And I'm just trying to make it, like, when we get to the point of actually adopting these, that we don't have to go back and re-vote because they just weren't able to do it, sort of thing.
That's a, going to Chair Dash's comments, that's a decision this board's going to need to make, and we bring these back to you for April for a decision.
Okay. Okay. All right. And I guess one other quick question. This bill that was filed, you know, to move it forward, it's my understanding, well, I guess I'm just going to ask, like, what happens if for some strange reason it doesn't pass? Like, would we, if the bill has been filed, but if for some reason it just didn't pass, then would the election just take place this year?
Yes. So under the way the law is currently written, if this bill does not pass, you will be required by that local law to run elections this November.
And they'll probably take it up here in the next month or so?
It would be unconstitutional, though. We would have to run, but...
I'm going to yield to our...
Unconstitutional. I mean, the, if this bill doesn't pass, then we don't have the authority to delay the elections. So we would be required to have the elections. The risk is that we may face challenges that, you know, the districts do not represent the population. But we would, we don't have a choice if this local bill isn't.
Right. Yeah. Well, we wouldn't want that. So, okay, just, I was just clarifying in case it didn't pass for some strange reason. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. And we are done for the evening, and so I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Go move. Motion from Ms. Bowers Bailey, second from Ms. Ship. All in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.